Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the January 22, 2024, regular board meeting. Appropriate notice has been advertised. Roll call, please.
Mr. Chu.
Here.
Mr. Craig.
Here.
Mrs. Maya.
Here.
Mrs. McCulsky.
Here.
Mrs. Severino.
Here.
Mrs. Seltzer.
Here.
Mrs. Celia's absent. Mrs. Sherman.
Here.
Mr. Tabey.
Here.
Mr. Dilkis.
Here.
And Mrs. Kayden.
Here. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. Okay, so we are going to, we just came out of executive session, and we are moving on to Section 3, Presentations. We have a presentation from our secondary administrators to show some highlights from their programming.
Feel free to play the Jeopardy! theme song in your head while the screen is lighting up. And while that's queuing up, good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and good evening and welcome to our new board members as well. My name is Jack McMullin. I have the honor and privilege of serving as the principal of Collingswood Middle School, and I've been in that capacity since 2006. And over the course of that time, we've seen our middle school go through various transformations from a 7th and 8th grade building to a 6th through 8th building, from a Collingswood-only middle school to a middle school that welcomed our students from Oakland as well as our teachers from Oakland. And over the course of these past 17 years, we have really seen a lot. We've seen pillars of our, of our school, longtime pillars of our school community retire, move on. And collectively, as a group, we wondered how we would ever replace that kind of talent. But staying true to our long-established core beliefs, our middle school core beliefs, we've been able to successfully navigate these various transformations. And each time we welcome new staff into our family, we make a conscious effort to ensure that these individuals share, support, and mesh with our philosophy of middle-level education. So I'm sure you're saying, well, what is that philosophy? And our philosophy is very simple. If you have a middle school student or ever had a middle school student or ever were a middle school student, you know it all happens in the middle. That is our philosophy, that is our core belief. And consistent with decades of research on middle-level education, we believe that it's very important to strike a balance, a balance between academic progress and social-emotional growth and development. We try to provide our students with opportunities to develop a growth mindset, resiliency, empathy, and we seek to empower our students. And we strive to build community and establish and maintain connections and relationships with our students. So striking that balance, we try to strike that balance between our students' academic progress or their IQ or content knowledge and their social-emotional growth and development, their EQ, their emotional intelligence. And in order to accomplish this, we strive to operate in that sweet spot, that top, upper-right quadrant. That's where our teachers establish credibility with their students. They build trust, they build immediacy, while concurrently demonstrating their content and pedagogical knowledge. And underpinning all we do is desire to be developmentally responsive to the social-emotional needs of our students while equitably challenging them to make progress academically. And through this process, we hope to ensure that we are supporting both the hearts and the minds of our students. To further empower our students, we seek to provide them with experiences that will allow them to practice and develop knowledge and skills they need to take responsibility for their lives, to address life's challenges, to function successfully at all levels of society, and to be creators of knowledge. In this area of student empowerment, we've been focusing on self-reflection and self-empowerment in consideration of the individual's personal level of engagement and their subsequent learning outcomes. So to accomplish this, we introduce our students to something called a continuum of engagement. We ask them to reflect on their input as it relates to their engagement. Where are you on this continuum? And then compare that to the outcomes in academic progress. In addition to looking at disengagement versus engagement, we also help students understand the full breadth of this continuum and encourage them to employ strategies that can move them from lower levels of engagement, participating, for example, to higher levels, investing in their learning, driving their learning through the degree of their involvement. So as we continue down the path in this presentation, I want to highlight the efforts that CMS makes in the area of connection building, community building. And over the course of the next few minutes, I'd like to tell you about some of the amazing things being done by our outstanding CMS staff to provide our awesome students with opportunities to make connections and build community. Thus far this year, our students have learned about a variety of communities through monthly heritage and community celebrations. Our students have had multiple opportunities to participate in service learning and community-building activities, and we are experiencing high levels of student involvement in our co-curricular activities and our CMS clubs. A picture is worth a thousand words. You can quote me on that. So in the area of service learning, community building, here's just a quick sampling of what CMS students have been doing thus far this year. That first picture is evidence of our 9/11 Day of Service, a school-wide event to honor victims of the 9/11 attack and at the same time render service to our community. In the third and fourth pictures, are members of our CMS Capelli Crew, our CMS service organization, making back-to-school supply kits for our kindergarten students. And the last picture is a flyer of our Veterans Day program, which was held on Saturday, November 11th at Tatum Shields VFW right here in Collingswood. In addition to CMS teachers and administrators, the following student groups also attended and participated in this event: our National Junior Honor Society, our CMS Choir, CMS and CH Orchestra, and the cast of the CMS Musical Newsies. It was a wonderful program in which, as usual, our students absolutely shined. And might I add, the number of students participating was very impressive, given the fact that this event was on a Saturday of a four-day weekend. So if you had the opportunity to be at Tatum Shields for that, you got to experience something very, very interesting. As we were wrapping up December, our CMS Kindness Club made a visit to our United Methodist Home here in Collingswood to entertain residents with holiday songs. So our kids are out and about in the community, connecting in lots of different ways. Our CMS staff and students are also actively involved in our Panther Pantry Program, a food bank that's been established to assist families throughout our school district and our sending districts. I would like to acknowledge our CMS teacher, Arden Niesner, who spearheads this initiative. Yes. Thank you. And I have to say, it has done a lot to build community within our school. And pictured on this slide is work being done by the students in our special education pre-vocational class as they help to organize the donations. And in further support of our community building, as mentioned earlier, our students have learned about a variety of communities through our monthly heritage community celebrations. Thus far, we've highlighted, recognized, and acknowledged contributions from the Latino, the LGBTQ+, Native American, and disabled communities with additional monthly celebrations to come. As part of our December Disabilities Pride Month, we also celebrated Inclusive Schools Week at CMS, during which we took part in daily activities and discussions, culminating in students signing our inclusive banner, pictured here, to demonstrate their support for all students and each other. One of the more traditional ways that connections are often formed in school is through co-curricular activities. And maybe many of us formed them when we were students, particularly the participation in our sports programs. And at CMS, we are fortunate to be able to offer a wide range of fall, winter, and spring sports. And we see high levels of participation in these programs. And I'd like to give a shout-out to all of our CMS scholar athletes and coaches for their time efforts and the grand style and high degree of sportsmanship with which they represent our school. These students put in countless hours and work very hard and are the embodiment of growth mindset and resilience. And speaking of hard-working students, growth mindset and resilience and representing CMS in grand style, we have a large number of students forming connections and building relationships through their participation in our Fine and Performing Arts Program. CMS students were quite busy in the month of December. We opened the month with our students performing in the CMS Musical Newsies. You had a sneak peek at the November board meeting. And between the cast and crew, we had 93 students participating in this production, 95 if you count myself and Mr. Jefferson. To put that into perspective, 20% of our CMS students participated in just this CMS musical alone. And if, yeah, round of applause, absolutely. After the meeting, I'll be reprising my role of Teddy Roosevelt out in the parking lot. And as I do say so myself, I mean, if they gave Tony Awards for middle school productions, every single student should have received one. We closed out the month of December with our winter instrumental and choral concerts. And if you're able to attend, you witnessed a high level of participation and an enthusiastic performance from our students. These programs are great extensions of our elementary program and a great feeder for our high school program. I'd like to take a moment to highlight the instrumental concert. During this program, held on the birthday of our dearly departed band teacher, Mr. Joe Lurch, students also had the opportunity to share their thoughts and feelings about Mr. Lurch as a tribute to his memory. Our students spoke in eloquent and heartfelt terms and specifically referenced the relationships that have been built and the community that's been established. The evening's concert concluded with band program alumni, some well into their 40s, coming up on stage to join the current band members and play a holiday medley that Mr. Lurch had arranged. And to me, as I say, just further underlying and reinforcing the importance of relationship and community building. It was, if you were there, I think you'll agree, it was truly a beautiful tribute. Yep. One of the unique things about CMS is the creativity that our staff brings to involve students. And another way that we try to do that is help our students develop the sense of belonging and make connections through a wide variety of unique. And I would say, once we flip through some of these, you will be very impressed. This is not your grandmother's after-school clubs. The overwhelming majority of these clubs are occurring because we have a wonderful group of educators who are willing to donate and volunteer their time to provide these opportunities to our students. Our staff, and when I say this, but they're middle school kids, but our staff truly enjoy spending time with our kids to support their interests and definitely understand the added bonus resulting from providing students with that sense of belonging and community and developing relationships with and among our students. As I said, many of these clubs are out gross of student suggestions, and the list of clubs is constantly evolving. Some of our newest clubs involve our Zen Club, Dungeons &amp; Dragons Club, Origami Club, Yoga Club, and our Multicultural Club. At CMS, all we need to get things started is a good idea and a teacher willing to supervise the activity and will give it a shot. You see, at CMS, our teachers also like to exercise their growth mindset. So I'd like to wrap things up this evening by showing a quick sampling of some of our additional club offerings. We're just going to click through the wide variety of opportunities that our students have to get involved and let you just marvel at the opportunities. That's right, esports. Quick shout-out. For the second consecutive year, CMS has won the Eastern Conference Championship. And congratulations to Coach Tad Myers and our CMS esports team. Doesn't that look like fun? Yes, that's right, you're reading that right. Trek Wars. Yes, Trek Wars, very popular debate. Those are actually avatars of three of our teachers who are involved with that, so yes. Kindness Club. More traditional yearbook club. Games Club. Chess Club. Design Club. Anime Club. Crochet Club. Our National Junior Honor Society. Our CMS Student Council. The aforementioned Capelli Crew. Our Service Club. And we have a couple additional opportunities to connect as well. So in addition to all these activities that have already been presented, I'd like to conclude my portion of tonight's presentation by highlighting two very cool and exciting events. Future City Competition. The Philadelphia Regional Future City Competition is an educational outreach program. It is one of over 50 regional programs conducted throughout the United States and the world with the goal to introduce middle school students to the engineering profession. This regional competition draws schools from Philadelphia and the surrounding counties, including the Lehigh Valley, as well as South Jersey and Delaware. Teams are comprised of students in our CMS Tech Ed classes under the direction of Mr. Myers. The winner of our school-based Future City Competition then proceeds to the Philadelphia Regional Competition. This year, the student's challenge was to design a 100% electrically-powered city with energy generated from sources that keep the citizens and the environment healthy and safe. From September until January, CMS teams have been working with Mr. Myers and professional engineer mentors. And for CMS, this also provides us with another link to our community as we have the good fortune to have members of our own community and parents of our students, Mr. Doug Robbins and Mr. Adam Brown donating their time and serving as our Future City mentors. And we truly appreciate them. And how about a round of applause for Mr. Robbins and Mr. Brown? And as I say, speaking of appreciation, Mr. Myers, this past Saturday, accompanied the CMS team to Philadelphia. The regional competition was held in Radnor, Pennsylvania. And although we did not make the finals, our students had an amazing and awesome experience. They did a phenomenal job presenting their future city to the various panels of judges. And hot off the press, we were just informed today that our CMS team won two special awards at the competition. Our CMS team won the First Winners Award, which is an award given to teams who impressed the judge who presided over the first competition in the region, and the Project Management Excellence Award. So we'd like to congratulate and thank the following members of our CMS team: Antonis Hajusukaros, Jonah Kayden, Nora Maxwell, Amelia Mazer, Audrey McGinley, and Isabel Ospina. So how about a nice round of applause? And once again, extend my heartfelt thanks to Mr. Myers, Mr. Robbins, and Mr. Adams for their time and efforts. This is the event you've all been waiting for. Another fantastic and creative way that CMS is attempting to build and strengthen our connections and relationship is through our 2024 CMS Family Fun Night. It will be held on Thursday, February 8th, from 6:30 to 8:00 p.m., right here in our high school cafeteria. The event's planned and run by members of our CMS staff. It's being sponsored by our CEA and funded through an NJEA FAS grant. And as described on the slide, the purpose of this event is community building and connection. Our theme is, very simply, "This Is Us." Celebrate diversity and inclusion. I know you'd pay a million dollars to attend, but admission is free. And we are inviting families to bring a donation for our Panther Pantry and/or the Wolf Love Rescue as their ticket into the event. Keep in mind, though, a donation is not required in order to attend. There'll be activities which include arts and crafts projects, student work displays, pizza refreshments, drum roll please, the ever-popular Candy Bingo, and more. I would need another slide and we'd be here for another couple hours, so I'll stop with that. So I would like to personally invite all the members of the board to join us that evening, as well as members of the community, to see our Family Fun Night in action. So as I said at the outset, it truly all happens in the middle. If you didn't believe me, hopefully now you are a believer. And although some of our days at CMS may be a bit stressful, the dedicated, actively-involved CMS staff loves what we do. We love our students, and collectively, we feel very fortunate to join our students on this part of their academic journey and work with them to realize and achieve their best versions of themselves academically and socially and emotionally. And I sincerely want to thank the members of our board for supporting us in this very important work. And now I'd like to introduce our Collingswood Middle and High School Secondary Curriculum Leadership Team, Mr. Dave Oliveri and Mr. Sean Kendall.
Thank you, Dr. McMullin. Good evening. It's great to see everybody tonight. I'm the supervisor of Grade 6 to 12 ELA, Social Studies, World Language, and Fine and Performing Arts. On the academic side of the ledger, we are working to ensure consistency and fidelity when observing and evaluating staff seeking adherence to the visible learning objectives. The HADI research demonstrates that students learn best when they know what content and skills they are learning, why they are learning it, and when they know they have achieved mastery. We are looking for these practices specifically on a regular basis. Additionally, our PLCs connect to larger district learning acceleration objectives. On the teaching and learning side, our ELA and Social Studies teams are working on deliberate practices such as close reading, annotation, and inquiry to advance student learning and comprehension. Other areas, such as world languages, are working on selecting materials which will provide consistency and seamless content transition as students move from levels 1 through 4 in their respective subject areas. And finally, all areas are working on designing and developing formative assessments that can provide real-time feedback on student progress and serve as an indicator of when a lesson must be adjusted. This, too, has become part of our observation process. These measures coincide with our benchmarking and NJSLA data analysis, which guides our unit and lesson planning. Looking toward the future, an important facet of upcoming plans, which include a targeted support class for Grade 9 students who are close to passing into the proficient range. This would permit us to focus on students' specific areas of need with the goal of turning NJSLA 3s into 4s. And finally, I would like to touch on our electives. Our students remain dedicated to these subject areas, and there always seems to be a great event on deck in addition to some outstanding student work. We have seen great work in graphic design and in all levels and areas of art. Mr. Oler's Oktoberfest happened recently, just a couple months ago. It was a great success, as usual. And as Dr. McMullin mentioned, we retreated to a pair of outstanding holiday concerts, both instrumental and choral, last month. With that, I want to thank you for your time. I'd like to turn the program over to our math, science, technology, and engineering supervisor, Sean Kendall.
All right. Here we go. Good evening. My name is Sean Kendall, and I supervise the STEM departments at the secondary level. I'd like to take a moment to highlight some of the news from our middle and high school math, science, and career and technology education courses. This year, we've continued the implementation of our Into Math curriculum resources at the secondary level. This has allowed for continuity of math program resources between the elementary and secondary levels. Students entering Grade 6 were familiar with this program from the elementary school, and this helped to ease the transition to math instruction at Collingswood Middle School. Additionally, the continuity of benchmark data provides valuable information to our teachers and administrators to help us better meet the needs of all our students. Additionally, we've added an accelerated math option at the 6th grade level for students who demonstrate readiness coming out of 5th grade. This has been quite the success through the first semester of the school year and will ultimately provide more students with the opportunity to access AP-level math courses earlier without the need to double up or take a summer course. The CMS math department was instrumental in helping to implement this, especially I'd like to recognize our 6th grade math teacher, Mrs. Erica Hahn. They saw her back there. She's doing an excellent job implementing the first year of this program. And also similar to what Mr. Oliveri just spoke of, our STEM PLC teams are working hard to support and accelerate student learning. The main focus of our STEM PLCs this year is to implement high-impact instructional strategies to analyze math benchmark assessment data and to collaboratively plan to improve math instruction. I'm also very proud to highlight the success of our engineering program at Collingswood High School, now entering its second year with the addition of our new Principles of Engineering course. This course focuses on robotics, 3D modeling, programming, and prototyping. And I'm happy to say that next year, we plan to add aerospace engineering as a third course to the engineering sequence. This will allow students to explore the physics of flight and space through software simulations and hands-on experiences. Finally, we've been happy to expand our LEGO engineering workshops at the elementary level. For our 4th and 5th grade students, this will continue in the spring semester, providing our younger learners a fun introduction to the engineering experience. So thank you very much for your attention, and I will now turn this over to our high school administration.
Good evening. My name is Colleen Hart. I am the assistant principal at the high school. Mr. Newman is actually not available this evening. He really wanted to be here, but he had a family emergency, so he's not. Mr. Whalen is going to introduce himself in a few minutes. Mr. Newman brought to the school, he is part of a fraternity. And he would say that, as his fraternity, they had a saying. And they would say, have a chant. So he brought it to the school and said, "This is our chant." So he would say, "He says, 'See wood,'" and they say, "You know." So there are some high school teachers in here who could help me out, and some students. students. So, "See what?"
You know.
So the students bring that to us. So we do it in pep rallies, we do it, and we want them to know that there are certain things. We know that see what is kind, caring, supportive, fun, and it's where we go. It's our high school. Bringing back the culture and climate is one of the major things that we are addressing at the high school level. It is bringing back that we are a family, we need to work together. So there are many things that we are focusing on. A lot of the things that are in the middle school, we bring up. We have the Panther Pantry. We celebrate grades. We have achievements. We have the Renaissance Program that, you know, honors the students. We tell them that their presence in the classroom matters, their presence in school matters, that we want them to be here and be part of the community. So they are definitely big achievements that we want them to understand. One of the big things that we always talk about is the positivity, is that we need to be positive. So Mr. Newman, every single morning, has music on the loudspeaker that the kids come into a positive place, that they have set goals, that a lot of students are checking in with their teachers, looking at their behavior, as well as their grades, and things to that. So we are really looking up at setting goals and presenting themselves in a manner that they can be proud of. One of the aspects that we are doing as well is that for TV production, we are online, and we are having our students do Good Morning Collingswood every single day. So we come in, we do the pledge, and then it's go right online and Good Morning Collingswood. So we have anchors. They bring in guest anchors. So many people, many teachers, many of our staff members are guest anchors, and they get to bring in different aspects of what is happening. There are student voices. We have a lot of student voices. So daily announcements are up, kids come at the end of the day and say what's happening. So if there's a wrestling meet, a wrestling match at the end of the day, the wrestlers are coming down, telling everybody to come out to their match. If there is a chorus concert, or if there's a club, the students are coming down, encouraging everybody to come and support their peers. We have this counseling slide. Next month, there is a more in-depth presentation, but we didn't want to just exclude that so that you know that there is more going on. We did the PSAT School Day. We have the Advanced Placement Program. College visits have been coming. They did a financial aid night, as far as the college planning nights as well. So next month, there will be an in-depth presentation for that.
Thanks, Ms. Hart. Also, Ms. Kimberly Hollenbach joined us in November. She's our new director of counseling, so a lot of you have not had a chance to meet her yet, but we certainly welcome her. She's working very hard with our counseling crew. They're getting in scheduling season right now, and again, you'll hear a little bit more about that next month. My name is Mr. Whalen. I'm the assistant principal for 9th and 10th grade. I'm going to talk about two of our major initiatives, looking at kind of student behavior and culture, and then non-athletic student activities. So last year, we took a really hard look at our student dress code, and it was very empowering, and the kids got to express themselves much more, and the kids were really happy when they heard about it. Last spring, we met about another major facet to students in 2023, '24, and we took a look at electronics, screen time, and cell phones. And for those of us who have kind of lived through education from the advent of the smartphone into our current times, we went through kind of a phase of techno-optimism where we felt like these are a part of life, they just have to figure it out. And coming out of COVID, we've noticed a lot of deleterious effects of those devices. Some of the research is coming out, and we looked at our specific procedure for handling smartphones at the high school level, which, when we met as a group, we decided was really an unenforceable wish. Keep them away. And I was talking to a parent this week who was having some issues, and she talked to their son about giving up the phone, and it was akin to giving up his arm. So we took a look at some of the research that came out last year from the Surgeon General, from the American Psychological Association, and decided that we needed to take a little bit sterner stance on removing that aspect from the classroom specifically. And so this is a work in progress. If you subscribe to our smore, we've put in some reminders there as we turn into the new year, that our ask is that the phones are away in these pouches during class time so that they can focus. We're looking at this not as a punishment, but as a mental health support for those kids to be able to regain that focus. We certainly are not Luddites. I am, I often, you know, you teach what you need most, and I know that my own children have seen me needing to put my phone away myself. So we're trying to work with the kids, we're trying to give them this gift of that attention and focus, and we're actually meeting next week, that small group of us, of faculty, some of the tech department, to look even further as artificial intelligence makes even bigger strides, and that technology just kind of accelerates beyond our, you know, rudimentary cavemen selves. Okay? So stay tuned. The second big initiative that is going to be a little bit more stressed in the second semester is restorative practices. So last spring, a small group of us were fortunate enough to attend a training by the NJ Bar Association, where they really focused on Tier 1 restorative practices, which are focused on community building circles and building up that capacity to really look towards less punitive measures for students. In the fall, that small group that underwent the first training met again, again with the NJ Bar, and focused on Tier 2 and 3. Our current focus is really staff-wide buy-in to Tier 1. We're looking at using circles with staff. We've dabbled in it, and again, that's going to be more of a focus semester two with staff to continue to build that community. It still has pockets. When I talk about our clubs, we have a 3G Girls Club who meets for circle time. Our Wellness Center is certainly using circles. And then also in pockets between our Alternative Instruction Room, our Wellness Center, we're touching on those Tier 2 and Tier 3 responses as well, and we'll continue to kind of push those types of interventions. So much like Dr. Jack spoke about, we have a plethora of student activities at the secondary level. I'm going to talk about the non-athletic ones. On the left is, this is, I believe, our second annual Senior Sunrise, which was really driven by student desire to, they saw some other schools that had this tradition where they come out on the first day of school. It's kind of ironic. The seniors come out really early on the first day of school, and then, as the year goes on, they don't want to be here as much. So Senior Sunrise, they welcome the school year, bring the sunrise, all right? And then on the right hand, with the help of Mr. Adams and all of our advisors, we held an Activities Fair in the fall during lunch, right out on the street here. All the clubs come out, they have sign-up sheets, they have demonstrations, things like that, to try to welcome all the new students, and especially the freshmen, into the various offerings that we have. Student Council is kind of the hub of a lot of our major events and activities at the high school. Every single student is welcome to join Student Council. A lot of times, students start in high school, they think, they hear Student Council, and they think it's only an elected position. And while we have them, every single student is welcome to join us at every single meeting. They're held, if I get this wrong, my wife will kill me, the first Friday of the month, I believe, in the LMC. And again, come, put your time in. We also have an executive board for Student Council, which is a specialized homeroom. Those students kind of spend, have demonstrated spending the most time attending these activities, planning these activities, driving that change. Our homecoming event, we had about 525 students come out for our homecoming dance, which had to shift to the gym for the second year because of its popularity. Leading into the holiday season, we did a cathedral kitchen donation where we donated about 250, 300 sandwiches that were made by the Student Council, as well as our Interact Club. We also had a lot of centerpieces and placemats created by our art classes. The Student Council is a member of the NJASC, the New Jersey Association of Student Councils. There is a Fall, Winter, and Spring Conference. There is a state charity that we always raise money for and donate to, and we, every two years, work to have one of our students run for the state Student Council. It alternates between the North and the South. Leading into the Christmas season, the holiday season, we have a staff breakfast, very early, get here at 6:30 right here, and the students serve us. It's always a very heartwarming event for myself. This year, and I've been at almost every single one, we had more students come than I've ever seen in my history of the breakfast. They come, they are, we almost had a personal waiter per staff member for them to serve them the breakfast. Reindeer Games, which is the staff's favorite day because we always win, is the last day before the break. Competition, I still don't understand how the staff are able to do a human pyramid quicker than the limber teenagers, but somehow they pull it off. So the freshmen, sophomore, junior, seniors, and staff all compete. This year, Mr. Herman took over the emcee duties. If you have not seen his Jason Kelsey speech, please look it up on Barstool on YouTube. He's a very deserving man, yes. Reindeer Games is also part of Spirit Week. It's a ton of work by our, I should introduce our Student Council advisor for the 17th year, 16th year, Mrs. Whalen. Spirit Week is a ton of work, ton of activities, a lot of fun for the kids, dress-up days, competitions, things like that. Leading into the spring, we will have the Red Cross Blood Drive. We are one of the only schools, I think, in the state that hosts two blood drives. Because of that, the Red Cross gives a scholarship to a graduating senior. Both Student Council and our Interact Club host those blood drives, which are a lot of work, and our kids are always very, very gracious and willing to donate. We have a Senior Citizen Prom in the springtime. It's very unique. People really like that free meal. It starts at 5:30, but they're in line at 4 o'clock. And our kids do a wonderful job serving them, dancing with them, you know? Last year's, one of the seniors actually had their own TikTok channel. It was really interesting. And then finally, the Last Dance, which is as our seniors getting ready to graduate, they invite a special guest, you know, guardian, parent, mom, dad, whoever, grandparent, and bring them for the Last Dance at the community center. It's a ton of fun as they're getting ready for prom and graduation. So like I said, Student Council is kind of the hub, but that is one of several activities, and this is not even all of them. What I would like to highlight from our clubs and activities is that we have a lot of new advisors this year, taking over for really big responsibilities. NHS is obviously a really important part of a high school, and our high school, and shout out to Shannon McDevitt for taking over. Her first year got through the application season, the approval, the meetings, and the induction, all in the fall. Really great job. Interact is led by Mr. Herman and Ms. Hall. Again, lots of volunteer activities, lots of service. I'm going to forget an advisor if I keep going this way, but yearbook and paw print are a ton of information. Mr. King retired last year, and like on Friday on the snow day, Mr. King probably would have snuck into the school to work on the yearbook. So Ms. Christopher Lee has taken over those very large responsibilities and getting them right. The Bike Maintenance Club, Mr. Bresch has started, brand-new club, he's raising some money. He's worked with the folks downtown who rehab bikes to teach some kids about bike maintenance. We have a World Language Club, as was mentioned, that we've had Oktoberfest in the fall. Our Model UN, our Mock Trial, they have tons of events that are coming up in, as the spring gets going. Capelli Service, along with the middle school. Social Justice, led by Mr. Fieldman. Women's Empowerment, GSA, and Girls' Guide to Greatness, all work kind of together. And the dance team is doing a wonderful job. I think they're dancing before the basketball game tomorrow. And several more options. We always have staff who are willing and looking for other opportunities to help kids start whatever niche club they want to. So very proud of our non-athletic student activities. And then to wrap it up with our athletics, I'm going to hand it back to Ms. Hart.
Thank you. So as, going right along with it, there are plenty of activities. So we have tons of sports available, and this year, we are actually starting a girls' flag football as a club. So this year, it will be a club sport that they can participate in both a sport sanctioned by NJSIAA, a regular sport, and then do the club as flag football as well. Going forward, next year, it will be considered an actual sport, and JSA has started a pilot for next year, so that will be considered a new sport for next year. So we are bringing that in. We had a lot of girls who were interested, so that is exciting and that is new. And the first year, the Philadelphia Eagles are sponsoring it, so it's actually, they give us a grant, so it's not costing us anything right now for the first year. They paid for the uniforms, and they give us a stipend to help pay for it, since we weren't really planning on starting it. So that's awesome, and we're very excited. The girls are very excited. We are going to do another signing day for our seniors. They get very excited about it when they decide where they're going to go to college, and they want to do it, and we have an amazing backdrop, kind of like the one up there, but it says Collingswood, and it's got the Panther all over it. So they love it, they bring all their friends and family, and they get to sign, and they take all the pictures that they want, and they get to post it. So it's a great day, and we're going to hold it in March this year again, and that's also a great day that they're excited and looking forward to. We have a student athlete leadership team, which we started last year, and we are trying to build upon again this year and do more things. One of the things that came out of it was that they wanted some more fun activities to do to support their teams, and one of those was that we usually just had one pep rally in the fall. That was kind of like the fall pep rally, where you got to do this fall sports and homecoming, and that's all, and the winter sports got left out, and the spring sports got left out. So we are changing that up, so now we're going to have a winter pep rally, and we're going to have a spring pep rally, so that everyone still gets to have that experience because only one season before got to. So the students said, this is what we want, we want to be able to, you know, cheer on everybody else, so we're going to do that. So actually, our pep rally is Wednesday. So the spring sports, look for those if your child is going to sign up for them, they'll be coming out soon if they haven't already come out. The game schedules are on the website. We've had some really cool things, and one of them is, I have a couple shout-out announcements because we've broken some records, school records, and we have some really great stuff happening. So one of them, I'm going to embarrass him because he's actually sitting in the back, is Dr. Carl Lang. So he was just inducted two weeks, two weekends ago into the New Jersey State Coaches Hall of Fame, so we have not had anyone for a long time inducted into the state Hall of Fame. And so Carl Lang is our athletic trainer, and he does an amazing job. We are the luckiest school around because Carl is the man. Anyone, he fixes it. So if your child ever gets hurt, you're lucky, they're going to Carl. He's got it. So Carl back there is amazing. So he was just inducted into the New Jersey State Coaches Hall of Fame. Declan Moody for Wrestling just had this past weekend his 300th win as a career coach, so that's also amazing. Kenny Chambers, about one hour ago, just for middle school wrestling, just got his 100th career win as a coach, so that was very exciting. The kids, the kids loved it, they all jumped in, they all have T-shirts, so everyone was there, it was awesome. Now on to our kids, because our kids are the reason why we're here. So another awesome is that Andy Kelechi, he broke the 500 freestyle high school swim record by four seconds, which is awesome. And he got into his college that he was hoping for with a really good financial aid package, so that's even better. So kudos to him. And then Matty Golia, she actually broke the school record for the number of rebounds in the girls' basketball game. So that was another awesome. So these are all the things that our kids are doing and that we want to keep, you know, bringing to the forefront, and we're excited for them. We want to keep sharing that. So thank you. That's it? That's it? Thank you. That's it? That's it, thank you.
Thank you so much to the secondary team for that great presentation. I think it's really important to highlight everything that we're doing at the middle and high school level to promote a culture of community, because without that, that foundation, the academic piece is gonna be a much harder lift. So, so thank you for, for all of that information. At this point, we're gonna move on to section four, Committee of the Whole, a motion to enter committee of the whole.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Okay, so this month, we have two things that we wanted to discuss, what, sorry? I'm sorry, all in favor? Thank you. Thanks. All right, now that we're set, we have two items that we wanted to discuss tonight. The first was surrounding curriculum. We are hoping very much that, starting, or that for the February meeting, we will have for approval, an assistant superintendent of curriculum, but knowing that that is not here yet, and just to clarify, for the remainder of this school year, that would be funded through grant funds, because we feel like that's a position that is important to have sooner rather than later. One of those reasons being that the New Jersey Department of Ed has released new standards, pretty extensive standards for math and ELA. They went through a pretty long process, beginning in 2022, to, to go through the, reviewing all of them, and had published them at some point in 2023, I see, from their release, it was October 4th, 2023, that it was presented to the state board. I've been asked, I've asked some of the teachers on our board to help me with this, since they are digging into the learning standards much more than we are, but just to be clear, we're not here to tell anyone how to implement those standards, we wanted this to be more of a, a heads up to the community, that this is something that the district is going to, to need to be reviewing and looking into how it will impact the curriculum and what refreshes may need to happen. And specifically of interest, for the English language arts, it appears from the summary that a lot of it goes into more detail, particularly in K through five, of emphasizing foundational aspects of reading and writing that we think would be, well, everyone thinks would be very important, but that could help with concerns about those same sorts of issues for reading and writing in middle school and high school. So Mary, who has, at her regular job, been digging into these standards for the elementary level a little bit, could I ask you to just give some high-level info about what parents maybe could be looking for coming down the pike?
Okay, well, I don't know how high-level it's gonna be, but I do have my.
Well, I mean, don't go into detail.
If you'd like me to read through them, I could. But, so I have looked at primarily the, move that away, the K through five ELA standards, and they basically focus on modifying redundant standards that are repeated across the grade levels. And the one thing that I found, I don't wanna get too deep into it because you said to kinda stick to the top, so I will, but they prioritize, as you were saying, the language domain. And basically, they, one thing that I read that, that jumped out at me was, they wanted to sort of, they talked about the, the need to have fluency with writing as well as with reading, because I think when we taught, when, a lot of time with, when we think about fluency, we think about reading. So they talked about the need to have fluency with encoding or with spelling, because that will free up working memory when kids are writing, so that they can have that working memory for the rest of the writing process. And so within the standards, some of the standards were not touched at all, because I think that, Kate, when we had talked about, you know, when they update standards, they don't, sometimes they don't touch anything with, with standards, and so some of the standards, there's, they didn't touch anything. But the standards that they did touch, when, with K to five, they did do work on making sure that kids in K to five are getting more of the phonological awareness piece, that's definitely, there's more specificity in that, and also in the writing process, there's more specificity in that. And also, the standards are more specific just across the board. And we had talked, Reagan and I had talked just briefly on this, I think, and that's a good thing, because across a school district, whether it's a small school district or a large school district, that's gonna lead to, you know, nobody wants cookie cutter classrooms, but that's gonna lead to a more standardized curriculum and less vague language, which will lead to more commonality. So whether your, your student is learning at school A or school B in the school district, they'll be getting the same instruction. So I hope that made sense. And Roger, I didn't forget about math, there just was, there was just, there was less updating in math. Basically, in, in math, they, they did a little update with including money for kindergarten and first grade, and then the rest of the way, they just basically, they included some examples and clarifications and real-world stuff, that's it. So hopefully that made sense, my brief.
No, it did, and, and I just wanted to give, you know, not to put you on the spot, you don't have to, but I know, you know, Rich is, is a curriculum director in a different district, Sarah and Megan are both teachers as well, if, if you guys have any extra input either about implications for, for what these new standards mean, or, or thinking about how this might impact curriculum. Apparently, Mary's gonna speak first.
Sorry, can I just say one more thing? And also, in thinking about if, if we get the kids, so through K through five, if they're getting that extra, those extra things in K through five, then hopefully the supports, they're getting that extra, the extra specific instruction K through five, then we're gonna know, hopefully, earlier on, if kids are struggling. So we can get kids, you know, earlier into MTSS, and we can get them earlier, the extra supports that they might need if extra supports are needed.
I was just gonna say, my understanding of some of the new standards is they, like, I guess going to what your point about specifics, is they are much more, like grammar is now included in K through five instruction, phonics awareness is included in, so kind of moving beyond just the readers workshop or readers circle, which should hopefully help with, like you said, identifying weaknesses, which will hopefully translate into more fluency at the upper levels. But it's gonna be interesting, because many of the graduate programs are continuing to teach FMP readers workshop, so it's gonna be, I think, a larger shift that's gonna have to take place across the board.
I think it's also, this is all good conversation, I think it's also important to make sure that we are seeing what's going on in the classrooms, talk to the teachers, see how they're implementing things and what they need to see the board review and adopt in order to better facilitate those things as well.
Just, just for clarity, I, in no way was suggesting that, that wasn't what the process would be, this was truthfully just to.
No, I wasn't.
Oh, okay, just wanted to make sure.
You said for teachers to contribute, so.
No, no, absolutely.
That's all.
I, to clarify, this is no way, shape, or form the board's role to dictate anything more than, you know, our being aware, making sure that the whole board is aware that these new standards exist, because not all of us work in education, and that, that it is important for us to just keep an eye on or listen out in curriculum committee and everywhere else for, for how that's being implemented. So thank you for saying that, because certainly didn't mean to imply in any way that, that this was something that the board was, was dictating. It absolutely will be the work of the, the teachers, the new assistant superintendent, when that person arrives, as well as, as the rest of the, the curriculum team.
And again, I was, I was certainly not suggesting that.
Gotcha.
Would not be part of the process at all.
Quick question, will these be implemented in '24, '25? Is that when these are supposed to go into effect, or they go effect immediately?
He wanted to know when they would be implemented? I guess we all need to lean close to our, our microphones, apparently, sorry. So I think that they've been released in 2023. The, the, the goal is for folks to look over it in '24, '25 school year, I, I don't, I don't know the answer to that. I don't know if, I'm looking at you as a curriculum director in a different district, I don't know if you know the answer, or if you know the answer to that question.
My, my understanding is that it's a go for '24, '25, but that's been an ongoing debate at the county and state level, just because of the quick turnaround time, yeah.
Right, that's what I was thinking, that feels like a fairly unrealistic ask, not that the DOE isn't famous for unrealistic asks, to fully implement new standards in such a short time, so I, I was assuming that this would, you know, wanted to put this on the board's radar, at the suggestion of Mary, which was a great one, because our district would begin, you know, digging into this deeper in the next, you know, as we speak kind of thing, but that we were aware of it as well. That's truly all I wanted to do with, with that section, was just to let us all know that it was, it was something to keep an eye on. The other thing we wanted to talk about was that the, the board received some information from Dr. McDowell about some Black History Month initiatives that have been planned throughout the district, and we wanted to, to be sure to celebrate that proactively, trying to be responsive from, from last year, I think that's exactly what the district is doing as well, and I think that they are to be commended for that. Not going to go into too much detail, because we're all going to learn what those things are through our children in the schools, and, and I'm sure that different teachers and schools have surprises in mind, and I'm not looking to, to ruin that for anyone. But, you know, we've, we have the media specialist in the, at the elementary level, working with the teachers to come up with really solid read-alouds and book lists and resource lists of things that the teachers can be doing, as well as things to send home for parents to be doing and talking about with their children, providing a list of black-owned local businesses that both the teachers can source books from, as well as suggesting that to families. And then at the secondary level, there's already a lot happening in the curriculum when it comes to African-American history as part of the Amistad Commission, but in addition to that, I know they have a lot of activities that they are working on planning, that the students are working on planning, which is why that's pretty much where I'm going to leave it for right now, but wanted to point out that that was something that has been on the radar of the board, as well as the district, and that I think that they're, they're making the, the right effort to, to be sure that that is more prevalent and implemented this year. On my list was the, the wonderful Inclusion Night that Dr. McMullin more thoroughly explained than, than I could have anyway, so that's one thing to look out for, along with, with other events in the various smores that will be going out to all of us from our children's schools in the coming weeks. So unless there is anything that folks wanted to discuss, either about the secondary program presentation, or either of these two topics, we can exit committee of the whole. All right, motion to exit committee of the whole?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Section five is future dates and miscellaneous information. You can check on there, beware that we've got a, a break for, for the President's PL Staff Professional Development Days, as well as, as President's Day in February, so that's something to look out for, as well as, there's a, February 27th is a CMSDHS Black History Month Choral Concert, starting at 7:30, open to all. Section six is routine business, moving on a motion to approve the minutes of the December 2023 Regular Board Meeting and the January 2024 Reorganization Meeting. Motion to approve?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Roll call, or all in favor?
All in favor.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. To ensure that we are not holding up our amazing student rep during the public comment section, I would like to give Mr. Ramsburg the opportunity to give his student board report, which is section nine, before we move to section seven.
There hasn't been much school for the period between the last meeting I attended and this one, but as far as student affairs go, the winter sports season has gone off to a strong start. I know Galilea can't be here today because she's busy dominating the girls' bowling I speak for all students collectively when I say I'm grateful for the snow, some of the closures letting me now work as hard as I needed to. The mock trial team in the first couple weeks of February will be having its first competitions, during which I hope we will beat Eastern, who stole the county finals from us last year by one point. As always, I encourage students at the school level, be it in the high school, middle or elementary, although the last two might be increasingly unlikely to approach me, Xander or Galilea, with any concerns or matters that they'd like to bring to the attention of the board.
Thank you, Trey, and also wanted to congratulate you on, after, I saw the, the picture that after your last student report, where you mentioned that the, the bowling club wasn't getting the love they deserved, I saw that they really did, so, so way to use your voice for good, because that was a really cool thing. And kudos to all of the sports teams that I know go and travel and, and watch other sports, cheer them on, that kind of thing, that's a really, really great community thing that I think our athletics teams do, so, so that's really great. Trey, as always, you are more than welcome to stay for the rest of our meeting, but we also, also fully understand that, particularly since you haven't had school in a while, you might have some work to do. So, there we go. Moving backwards now in our agenda a little bit to section seven, the, this is our first opportunity for public comment. The purpose for this public comment section is to discuss items listed on the agenda. Additional more general comments may be made later in the meeting. The public is reminded that attempts to resolve all concerns and complaints should first go through appropriate staff members and administrators. The intent of public comment is to give the community the opportunity to provide feedback to the board. We will be actively listening and taking notes so that we can take all that is being said into consideration. If appropriate, clarifying comments may be made at the end of the public comment section. For more detailed responses to concerns, communication may go out later in the week by the appropriate staff members or administrators, or be discussed by the board during future committee meetings. Members of the public are welcome to speak and expected to do so with the utmost sensitivity for everyone in attendance. In fairness to all who wish to speak, there is a strict three-minute time limit per person during public comment. Ms. Coleman will be using her timer and will indicate to you when you're close to your time being up. Please come to the microphone and remember to state your name and address for the record.
Wayne Rossi, 114 East Palmer Ave. Yeah, I noticed in the agenda that one of the items was a contract for the next several years for Dr. McDowell, and I think that that's a very positive move on the board's part. I think, you know, it's hard to think of a more challenging circumstance to have thrown an educator into, and while I don't think everything's gone smoothly, I do think that there's been a lot of listening and a lot of growing that the administration's done in the last several years. I think Dr. McDowell, particularly in the last year, I've seen a lot of efforts from him on the, on the racial justice front. I think that, you know, bringing in restorative justice practices, working with the DEI committee, making sure, you know, really seeing that we're creating a more, more inclusive curriculum has been really positive, and I, I also agree with the item in Committee of the Whole that it's gonna be so important to get a really great person in for that curriculum director. But I, I do think that that's something, you know, I, I'm not uncritical, and I, I will not hesitate. But I do think that that's something, you know, I'm not uncritical, and I will not hesitate to call anyone who I think is not doing the right thing out on it, but I do think that this is the right move to go ahead with the further contract for Dr. McDowell. Thank you for your time.
Robin Hogan, CEA president. So, good evening, and on behalf of CEA, want to congratulate Matt and Roger and Sarah Sherman on their election. Also, oh, I'm sorry, did I cut somebody off from applause? Okay. Sorry. Okay. I also wanted to welcome our new Oakland liaison, Mr. Tabey. Am I pronouncing that right? Okay, great. Okay, so, welcome. And even though he is not here, I want to publicly thank Mr. Bill Stauts for all his years of service in his role as the liaison from Oakland. Over. Hey, Robin, and I just want to say, he's been on the Oakland Board. I had to look it up. Actually- Is this coming from my time, by the way? Yeah, I'm giving you three seconds back. Forty-nine years. Okay. Really? Yes, it'll be fifty next year, so just FYI. All right. Thank you. Okay. So, over the years, Bill has become a public institution at our BOE meetings, and we appreciated his no-nonsense approach, the tough questions that he was not afraid to ask, and his steadfast sense of fair play. Bill is gonna be greatly missed, so from the members of CEA, thank you, Bill, for your dedication to Collingswood. So, finally, on tonight's agenda, the board is seeking approval to send a contract for the renewal of the superintendent to the county office. So, we are just asking the board, share with the public, the process and the metric that was used, the result of which led the board to take this step. Teachers were evaluated on the Dannison Model. The process is spouted by regulations, the metric, and the process is visible. When the students are in my math class, they know the learning attention and success criteria. They know what they're expected to do and know and understand by the end of the lesson. So, they understand the metric and the process. So, the CEA is just asking what the metric and the process was that was used by the board, that demonstrates their due diligence. This is an excellent opportunity to build trust and demonstrate that as board members, you're committed to transparency and due process. We look forward to hearing your response.
My name is Lisa Hall. I'm a math teacher here at the high school, and this is my 19th year teaching at CHS. I'm speaking this evening to the Board of Education to express my concern regarding the recent lack of retention of my talented colleagues, specifically but not limited to the math department. Collingswood was once considered a district of choice for top talent. However, with the influx of departures over the past few years and a continued negative impact of larger class sizes on both our staff and student body, this is no longer the case. The math department specifically has lost two veteran teachers to neighboring districts since June 2023, and a third is leaving mid-March, each with 20 years of experience. With two of those positions not being filled, leaving most in our department with inflated class sizes, this has had an impact on providing individualized attention to students and maintaining a conducive and rigorous learning environment. In a personal effort to recruit, I recently reached out to an alumni regarding the upcoming opening, and their response was, and I quote, "I would have to take a pay cut, and that place is a hot mess." The lack of stable teacher-student relationships is negatively impacting student engagement and success. To summarize, we have a talent attraction problem, we have retention issues as we continue to lose talented tenure teachers. In order to maintain educational equity within Collingswood School District, we must address these issues. The students and faculty need and deserve this to be addressed immediately, and at some point, it has to matter. Thank you.
Hello. I'm Stacy Brown Downham, 309 Oakland Avenue in Oakland.
Sorry, I didn't hear that from the clapping. I heard Stacy mutter her last name.
Stacy Brown Downham, 309 Oakland Avenue in Oakland. I'm an Oakland public school parent and a high school parent as well. I am here, though, as a Haddonfield special educator, proud public educator, and I'm here in budget season and with the news that you're also bringing in a curriculum supervisor to urge you to bring in someone with a science of reading background. Across the nation, 60% of our students graduate unable to read at grade level, 20% are functionally In New Jersey, we just recently, while we rank in the top of public schools, our literacy scores are low. We do have students entering fourth grade, I think 40%, unable, without basic reading skills. This is a problem across the nation. If you want to learn more about it, you can listen to the podcast Sold a Story, which talks about all the money that was brought in for balanced literacy, your Lucy Cockens, your Fontes and Pennell. We would like, I would like to see those replaced with something that is more based on the science of reading. It's also less, something less intensive for teachers, for evaluation, something like Dibbles. And this has to be a K to 12 initiative, not just a special education initiative, but also regular education, starting in our pre-K with our phonological awareness skills, then moving to our phonics skills. You really need to invest in robust training for educators. It's not enough to have a three-day workshop. In Haddonfield, we had students coming to the high school unable to read. They did not know what their letter sounds were, they did not know how to break words into syllables, and then a group of parents pushed us to invest in education. We took a cohort of educators from every school building. We were trained in Wilson Intensive. We were coached for an entire year. I was expected to have my practicum student do three full units during that time and master that, demonstrate growth on the WIST, which is a word identification and spelling assessment. That revolutionized my teaching. I can now teach students how to read, and what, I mean, it's their right, right, to be able to read, but I'm noticing in this district, in the middle and high school, and I was caught in a system, it wasn't like I didn't want to teach students how to read. I was caught in a system that wasn't funding it, that wasn't training us for it, and wasn't prioritizing it. So, I'm not blaming the educators here. There's wonderful things happening in Collingswood Schools. But this is an area that we need to work on, and we need to invest in coaching, supporting, and if we already have educators that have that training, elevating them into these roles where they can really maximize their impact in the building. We only have Read 180 in the middle school, and that's not enough. You want a robust program that's going to allow you to focus on encoding and decoding skills for students. They cannot build fluency, they cannot build their comprehension. If they don't know what sounds letters make, they can't break words into syllables. So, I encourage you to reach out to Haddonfield to see what kind of money they invested in it. We continue to invest and to change our programming. We're still kind of pulling Fontes and Pennell of our system, we're taking some Lucy Cockens out. That made reading seem like it was magic. Look at the word. Look at the first letter. Look at the picture. Guess what word that might be, right? There's a science to reading. We don't want to make reading so clinical that students hate it. We want to have a book nooks. We want to have access to robust reading resources, but we need to invest in high-quality training for our educators so that all students leave Collingswood able to read and to write. Thank you.
Sorry, I'm tall. Good evening. My name's Jeff Herman. Teach here at the high school. Coming around to you is a piece of paper that lists 37 staff members that are currently no longer with us at the high school. Last year, I came to speak to you when the budget for the school year was presented. I spoke about the high number of teachers who had been leaving the high school and how I felt that that would create problems for this year. While we are here now in the school year, and these problems that I spoke about last year have followed right along with it, larger class sizes, less programs, all the problems have been mentioned before, I won't get into that. We certainly are being asked to do a lot more with less. My main concern tonight is staff retention. At the chart in front of you, you will see that since the start of the 2022-2023 school year, like I said, 37 staff members have left the high school. Of those 37, 21 resigned and went to other districts. If you take a look at the list, you will see those districts include those as Haddon Township, Haddonfield, Audubon, Lyndenwald, Burlington, Moorestown, West Stepford. These are some of our neighboring districts. While we are losing so many good teachers to other districts is beyond me. I implore you, the board, to answer this question as to why we are losing so many good teachers to other districts. I spoke with the other districts, and I've gone through some of their board minutes, and not a single local district in our area has had double-digit resignations in the last two years. Yet, here we are, trying to reason with the loss of 37 colleagues and wondering how it is that we are the ones that are left stuck with the problems of 37 people leaving. I ask our school community to continue to question the board and district leadership about why this is and what they are prepared to do about it. Thank you.
My name is Carrie Randazzo, 829 Stokes Avenue. I'm here as a parent. I am, our district is in dire need of reading intervention, and I'm speaking because I have a daughter that graduated from Collingswood High School last year, and I have another daughter that is in sixth grade at the middle school. I will reflect mostly on my experience with my second daughter. She was identified when she was in first grade that she had, she was at a lower reading level. From there, she received support. She was evaluated by the child study team, and in third grade, she was put in special education for reading, third, fourth, and fifth grade. She went to Zane North. She had a wonderful school experience in the sense that my child loves school. It was very positive in that direction, yet she is currently in sixth grade at a second grade reading level. I find this unacceptable. Currently, she is reading, she is receiving no reading intervention for decoding and encoding. Without this skill, she will never become a proficient reader. She gets by by memorizing what words look like and simply guessing. A multi-syllabic word, she cannot do on her own. She will, if she does not receive the intervention, she will continue to struggle throughout school. And we all know that once kids, the simple ability to read, what that can mean to them, their mental health, their overall well-being, they suffer greatly in their behavior they will act out. I do not want to see this go ahead and happen with my second daughter. She deserves the intervention that is needed for her, the basic skills of reading. I am not someone, I never had a reading disability, so it's hard to understand that someone doesn't have the ability to sound out a word. Yet, for kids with dyslexia, that's where the weakness lies, that phonetic awareness, and they need more instruction for that. It's not reading comprehension. She's a bright kid. Her IQ runs between average to high average. It is not related to her cognitive ability, yet she, her reading scores fall between low and extremely low. And as of right now, she entered middle school with absolutely no additional intervention for phonics. I find this completely unacceptable.
Sorry, Carrie, your time's up.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Charlotte.
My name's Tim Farrell. I live at 911 Park Avenue. I want to talk about the item on the agenda, which is the renewal of the superintendent's contract. I'm going to follow up on what has already been discussed to start, but in general, what I'm doing here is a job performance evaluation. This is not a personal attack on Dr. McDowell. It's not about any personal characteristics of Dr. McDowell. It's simply about job performance. When we talk about job performance in the corporate world, when we talk about an issue that was just addressed here by one of our teachers, which is a record pace of loss of our staff, no corporation, when they're evaluating their CEO, is going to simply say it's a national trend. They're not going to do it. They're going to determine, is there a connection between that and their leader? And we all know the next step that the corporation would take, is they would take the step when we're in a drastic situation that we're in, in this district currently, in terms of the loss that we're experiencing of our staff, is they would take the action of going to the leader and taking the appropriate action. When we're talking about evaluating the performance that he's had over the last three years, the next question is, what's the connection to this drastic situation that particular high school is in? And when we talk about the performance, we can look at, starting at a recent issue, with something as relatively minor and silly as a snow delay, but the fact of the matter is, it exemplifies the problems that our staff and everybody in our district has been experiencing, and that is, a decision that should be an easy one to make was made at the 11th hour, causing major issues for our staff and students when school is delayed at 7 o'clock in the morning when school's about to start. We all know the problems inherent in that. And then what happened is, the immediate first response was to blame others, to blame the buildings and grounds, to blame the borough for not clearing the roads. I'm not saying that Dr. McDowell is trying to do this, that this is his personal vendetta that he has, but it's the action, for some reason, that's his first response. And then after that, it's corrected with a lengthy explanation. It's corrected with lengthy emails and texts when it comes to next, making a call about weather-related closing that happened later in the week. And it's forming perhaps other committees to deal with the situation. That's the pattern. And why did we have to do that? Perhaps because he was worried about students having their time in school, because we have a record amount of half-days that have been complained about this year. And what response did we have about the half-day issue? We had a response that it's our staff that wanted the half-days. And we know from our staff, that's not the case. Again, it's blaming others for what was otherwise considered a problem. So, in the end, I just ask that you consider the pattern. Thank you.
My name is Dashrell Korea Fisher. I live at 1017 Eldridge Ave, and I am a junior in the high school. I was not going to speak today or even show up today, so it's a chance that I'm here. And a point that I would like to raise is the lack of, actually, I wouldn't say the lack, I'd say the ample amount of what I'd call failure classes. And those are basically classes that you take where almost nothing is put into it, and then nothing is taken out of it from the students and the teacher. And I have noticed that this has been a rising issue because of the resignation and the departure of many teachers from the school and from the district, but I don't know about the other schools if this is the case. But I've noticed this with a lot of, you know, the extra classes, not so much for the classes that have teachers that have been here for a long while, but students that want to get something out of their education and students that don't, both deserve the equal opportunity of having the top teachers, the top education, and the top knowledge and information on the subjects that they intend to learn or don't intend to learn. It's not up to the students to decide what they are taught, it is only what they are to take out of. But if there's nothing worthwhile that is being shown to the students, then they are left with nothing, and that's, it's an unfortunate case. And I'm not saying there's teachers that I am pointing out specifically, I don't, I can't say that I am with any type of spite, but, you know, there are teachers that need other teachers to do their job, I've noticed, and this is not okay, especially if they're not, you know, contributing anything to their own class and their own curriculum. And either the students are going to take this and not listen to a single thing that the teacher says, and they're going to end up flunking, or- and they're going to end up flunking or whatever could arise from that. Or, you know, the teacher is going to leave because the students aren't doing what they're being told, which is very little, yet it's so uncoordinated that they are confused and have no choice. And I would just like to raise these points because it's, it's a rising issue. And I'm in at least two or three classes where that's the case. And I probably shouldn't have just said that, but I'm not going to say which ones they were. But thank you. I'd just like to raise those points, so.
Leah Foreman, I live at five oh one South Vineyard Boulevard. And I think we can all agree that context is king. We lived through an unprecedented time in 2020. Dr. McDowell came in with a lot on his plate for post-COVID. And I think when we talk about results, we need to talk about revenue and the revenue that was brought in to our district. And Dr. McDowell brought in four, over four million dollars in revenue. And his predecessor did not. And I think it's really important that we talk about the wellness center and the responsive leadership that we've had during this unprecedented time. I think it is really unfair and I think there's a lot of misinformation coming out. And I think we, I don't know why we refuse to talk about the hand that we've been dealt here. COVID was a big factor. And I've seen the leadership not do everything perfectly, not do everything right, but be responsive. I've seen feedback be, been taken and received and implemented. And I think that that is as important as anything as we live through and continue to live through this post-pandemic world. Thank you.
I probably don't need this. Hi, I'm Mrs. Stannier. I've been an English teacher in the high school for a bazillion years. And I guess two things I wanted to address. First of all, that kind of our lack of retention. I am one of two tenured English teachers in our English department right now. Generally, in high schools, English teachers retire from their departments. We have great kids and we love them. And the fact that we have so many subs and the subs are overwhelmed is because of teachers leaving. Last year, we had teachers leave mid-year, leaving students with very little recourse. And it was very frustrating. But the other thing I really wanted to talk about, and it does touch on funding, is I'm concerned that we are using grant money to pay salaries because grant money runs out. We should be using grant money to buy books and to buy programs, things that are concrete that will last. If we have, like, our whole wellness center, which is a great idea, those people working up there are, for the most part, on grant-funded salaries. If that grant runs out, those people have to be let go and the wellness center gets shut down. And I do understand that finances are difficult for everybody. But if we do have this grant money, wouldn't it be wiser to invest in some of these new reading programs? Some concrete stuff that will outlast two or three salaries that will then leave us with a hole in departments or make us be, make us be forced to deal with a loss of services? And so I am really concerned that that seems to be one of the things to fill our holes. We're using grant money. And that grant money should be used to buy concrete things, more materials, more, you know, reading intervention programs that will have a longer lifespan than the actual grant. If the grant is three years and we are hiring people with that money, when the three years are over, we have to let those people go. And so, unless we can fund them ourselves, and we can't. So these great services that we're getting and that are really going to become part of the community are going to be something that may be lost in three years unless we find an alternative funding. So I do caution you in, to really look at how we're investing that grant money. Because I feel that we are simply rolling the boulder up the hill and it's going to roll back on us when those grant money runs out. And we're going to have to fill those positions by taking away more resources. Thank you so much.
I apologize for my clinger. I'm Kristin Tosh. You can find me in the middle school room two oh two. In addition to being a teacher at the middle school and several other roles I've taken on over the years, I also have the pleasure of being Collingswood Education Association's Early Career Members Chair. In this role, I get to welcome all of our new staff, year to year. And I offer support to them until they receive tenure. It's been a rewarding role in the past, but has become increasingly more stressful over the past few years. You may remember, as Mr. Herman had mentioned, last year, several staff members and community members expressed their concerns at many board meetings about teacher retention. Well, I get to see firsthand, in my position, how this has not improved. Knowing that teacher retention was such a hot topic, I was wondering what plans and discussions have been had among the members of the board. My first year as the ECM chair, I welcomed fifteen, about fifteen new members. In 2022, we had forty-six new staff members. And this fall, we welcomed an additional thirty-eight. As exciting as it is to have new teachers, these numbers prove that teacher retention is still a problem. It takes just a few minutes to review the board minute, the board meeting minutes over the past three years to see that our district has had ninety-seven resignations. Most teachers in neighboring districts, or most of those teachers are now in neighboring districts. I need to protect our newest members, encourage them to stay, and support their futures here. And at times, this feels like an impossible task. Our staff has been working tirelessly to improve the culture and morale at our schools. We are doing our part. We want to know how you're doing yours. Another concern of mine in this role is whether or not several of our first-year teachers are going to be let go with the, with any of the numerous grants that we pay staff through that are going to expire. How can we expect quality applicants when we can't promise them more than one year of their time? Have the salaries for our MTSS coaches and the Wellness Center team been budgeted for? Or will they bump out our newest teachers as their grants come to a close? I welcome your comments, insight, and feedback. I'm fighting to keep teachers here in Collingswood, and I cannot fight that battle alone. Thank you.
All right, let's see here. I'm going to take the mic off like Frank Sinatra style here. I'm Mike Pucci. I'm the other tenured English teacher in our department. And so we have a hundred percent of our tenured English high school teachers are here tonight. And I just wanted to take a moment to address some of the similar topics that have been brought up tonight. And I'm going to say one thing, and then I'm going to say something that kind of bothers me. I'm also a parent in this town. You know, I have young kids in the elementary and preschools. And, you know, it's kind of hard when you feel a professional obligation to kind of speak about what we're experiencing in the district. But also, as a parent, you know, I want, you know, I love this place. I want my kids to have a great experience here. And I think that we have to ask ourselves, you know, we talk about national trends. You hear it all the time. It's a national trend.
Mr. Pucci, can you, we just need you to address us, that's all. Thank you.
I'm addressing you.
I know, but just face facing this way, that's all. Thank you.
I mean, they're not giving me like signals or anything. I'm just.
I understand that. That's just the format for the meeting, that's all.
That's not cutting into my time, right? We're good? Okay. All right, so I'm going to face this way. So one of the things that I just want to point out also, though, is, you know, we talk about the Wellness Center, and rightfully so. Those folks do a great job. I've personally seen them come in and take students out who needed their resources and get them the help that they need. It's fantastic. They're all great people. But they're responding to a national trend of student mental health issues. That's not something that only happens in Collingswood. And so how come we don't say, well, it's a national trend? We can't do anything about it. So even if teacher, you know, even if we're losing teachers and that is, take that at face value, that it's a national trend, what are we going to do about it in Collingswood? And, you know, I think that we have to think about, you know, I don't understand. There's a tendency from some of the folks in our town and in, quite frankly, in our district, to talk to everyone else before they talk to us. I guarantee you, nobody cares more about the students in this district than the people who work with them every day. And we hear a lot. We hear a lot of buzzwords. We hear about equity. We hear about our, you know, our, our lower and lower achieving and disadvantaged students. How are we providing an equitable educational experience for a student whose teacher has a hundred and fifty other students? You know, how, like, these are not just buzzwords. These are things that those of us who do the work, day in and day out, care very passionately about and very deeply about. And I guarantee you that nobody cares more about equity, about diversity and inclusion than the people in this building that work with our kids every day. Okay?
Hi. How do I make this sound familiar? Oh, okay. Alexandra Guido Smith, three eleven Lakeview Drive. I'm speaking today as a, an educator, a reading specialist, a teacher with more than twenty years as a public school educator, the parent of two children of color. And I am speaking here because my family and families that look like mine have found a home in Collingswood. And I feel like, over the past couple of years, my children can look at the leaders of this school, of their schools, and they can see themselves. And they look at the work and how the people are being treated, at how leaders are being treated, and they can see themselves and their opportunities. And that is something that doesn't happen in the district where I work and it doesn't happen in any district where I, where I have worked before. And so I feel like when we talk about losing teachers, it is a terrible thing. And my heart goes to a year ago when those high school students were walking out. I would like to bring that focus back here. Those children, their safety, that is what you are tasked with. That is what the staff are tasked with. That is why we're here. As a reading specialist, there is a far way to go. And I want to tell you how happy I am that my kindergartner gets phonological awareness practice every day with Hegarty, every day. Gets phonics instruction on decoding and encoding and breaking up syllables and digraphs with foundations. There is a very far way to go. And I am so glad that Collingswood is starting where we are because of the leadership that we have and the programs that you have chosen. We're not ten years behind, enwrapped in Lucy and found us in Pennell. With good instruction, there is a way through. And so I beg you, to be here is a privilege. I have a babysitter and I can speak to you. Please continue doing what you are doing. It serves my kids. It serves all of our kids. Thank you.
Hi, everybody. I'm Brenda Borakowski. I live on Harvard Avenue here in Collingswood. I am a parent of a kindergartner and a fifth grader at Tatum. I would just like to speak to the board to recognize the accomplishments of the district under Dr. McDowell's leadership, of which there are many. As has been mentioned, record-high grant funding, the fantastic New Wellness Center that makes it clear our district prioritizes student health at a time of historic mental health crisis. I also appreciate the deep dive into data surrounding discipline disparities that laid bare the racism inherent in Collingswood's historic patterns of overpunishing, or one might even say overpolicing students of color, particularly black boys. I also appreciate the emphasis on restorative justice practices that will help to resolve that discipline disparity and promote anti-racist practices in our community. The list of accomplishments goes on. But in my view, the most important accomplishment has been the recruitment and hiring of black administrators in our district. During the time of Dr. McDowell's leadership, Collingswood has gained not one but two principals of color, one black man and one black woman. This is an immense gift to our community, especially to our students of color, as I believe it will serve as a powerful tool in recruiting teachers of color. Seems like maybe teacher recruitment is something that might be on everybody's mind right now from the, the other comments I've been hearing. Research shows that black students who have one black teacher by third grade are seven percent more likely to graduate high school and thirteen percent more likely to enroll in college. After having two black teachers, black students' likelihood of enrolling in college increases by thirty-two percent. My children are young black men. They have not yet had black educators during their time in Collingswood Public Schools. But I believe that with black school administrators in place, there's a chance that may change to the benefit of my children and the other many, many, many young black students that do not see themselves reflected in Collingswood's large pool of teachers. Collingswood is changing. The student body is changing. And now I believe the student body will change, and it might change for the better. I welcome the new Collingswood, and I am grateful to Dr. McDowell and the district's leadership in ushering in the future, one that reflects our fantastic racially diverse student body. I look forward to seeing what the next few years bring under Dr. McDowell's continued leadership. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Morgan Laird. I live at four oh one Woodlawn Avenue. I am both a Tatum parent and teacher. My daughters are in second grade there, and I've been the resource from teacher at Tatum for the past six years. And prior to that, I taught at Garfield for twelve years. Since 2021, I have seen many talented teachers and staff members leave Collingswood for jobs in neighboring districts where they are finding better pay and better work-life balance. We are struggling to attract new staff members because our pay scale is not competitive. Also, since 2021, funds have been used to hire outside firms for audits and consults in an unprecedented manner for this school district. Has the return on investment been sufficient to offset the vacant positions and student services that are going unmet? As a staff member and parent, I have watched a disconnect grow between Collingswood's teachers and staff and its board without any genuine attempts to repair it. Thank you.
Hi, hi, my name is Tom Howard. I live at sixteen Fraser Avenue. I am a, I'm a parent of a Tatum student. Actually, she has Mrs. Laird. Mrs. Laird is awesome. So she's doing, so kudos. She, she rules. And generally, the teachers that my daughter has had here have also rule. I'm also an educator. I, I've been teaching for now my twenty-fourth year, not in Collingswood, but in a neighboring district. And I am concerned about the, you know, the potential for renewing the leadership for Dr. McDowell, particularly because of the teacher retention issue that, that deeply concerns me, not just as, as an educator, but also as a parent. I know that teachers, I mean, being a teacher for twenty-four years, I know that teachers don't leave schools, especially to other districts, unless there's something, something wrong. They, they don't want to disrupt the connections they have made with their students, with their colleagues, with their community. It's a huge, huge thing. So to see the mass exodus over the couple, last few years is deeply concerning to me as a teacher, as a teacher, as a parent. And so I would really like to see some honest evaluation of why that has been happening and to really see if it's something that can be addressed, you know, effectively. Because a lot of teachers have spoken very effectively about the high school level. I mean, it's also happening at, at the, the Tatum, the, the elementary school level too, where, you know, to my daughter's case, her, her case manager that she had last year, now. now is, now went to another district. The teacher she had last year as a resource teacher went to another district. And so, it's not just affecting the high school level, it's affecting all levels. And my daughter has dyslexia. She has real needs, so I'm worried about the continuity of, of teaching that goes on. And the teachers are great, and she loves, again, Mrs. Laird, she loves the teachers in the school, but I am concerned of what this loss will do to her future education as she goes into middle school and beyond. And I'm hoping that a real honest evaluation of the leadership can be had and that it can't be just, again, cast away as a national trend or to say it's a few bad actors who just are leaving because they're disgruntled. Because as an educator, that can be insulting. And again, it's not truly reflective of the great disruption in educators' lives when they leave to another district. Thank you very much.
My name is Lori Ludwig, and I'm a music teacher in Collingswood Schools. My job responsibilities include K-5 general music classes, elementary instrumental lessons for grades four and five, the seventh and eighth grade concert band, high school concert band, elementary district band, the secondary music PLC leader, marching band, and the indoor marching program. If anyone listening is thinking, wow, that's a really long list, you'd be right. In fact, anytime I answer fellow music teachers who ask about my job responsibilities, the responses I receive range from, how are you managing all that? To, you need to get out of there. I've actually had a couple of colleagues offer to give me their job in a few years when they retire. Now, I didn't come here tonight to complain about my job. I love my students, their parents, my colleagues, office staff, and I have felt supported by multiple members of our school administration team. I came here tonight to express concerns about what the renewal of Dr. McDowell's contract would mean for the music department. Every one of us wants to be able to provide our students with a better education than we had ourselves, but the experience that I am able to give our band students doesn't even come close to what I experienced. There are too many structural barriers to success that were encouraged by Dr. McDowell through his lies spread about the music department. First, Dr. McDowell told parents that Mr. Lurch had enrollment as low as one student in a class as justification for not hiring another music teacher after his passing. This is absolutely false. It never happened. Second, Dr. McDowell said that band is more of an after-school activity. This statement is unequivocally false. Band programs throughout the country happen during the school day. Our nine-year, fourth through 12th grade band program is an elective course that must reside during the school day. Third, Dr. McDowell has also said that the music department doesn't have everything they want, but they have everything they need, and no one is overworked. I prepare an elementary load and a secondary load in addition to extra duties, working 14 hours a day a couple of days a week. Our orchestra teacher is teaching two different curriculums in one class period, doubled his music technology student load, and is teaching sixth grade band. One of my elementary colleagues sees 135% of the student load the other one sees. The amount of elementary lesson slots have been inadequate for years, and this year, there is a small group of 18, clearly not a small group, along with inappropriate groupings. We do not have everything we need, and several of us are absolutely overworked, regardless of what the contract says. Because of this, students do not receive the quality of education they deserve, their opportunities to learn are limited, and they're disadvantaged when compared to other schools. Those whose parents pay for private lessons find themselves able to compete. So, here at Collingswood, we have a wide range of musical ability, which is largely based on the haves and the have-nots.
Thank you, Ms. Ludwig. Your time is up.
Thank you.
Hello. I live at 724 Park Avenue. I'm speaking as a community member, but also as a parent of a junior. I have a lot of concerns approaching you tonight, and again, I will repeat what another of my community, community members said. This is nothing personal against you, Dr. McDowell, but I think if the board is not assessing your performance by the use of information about the multitude of teachers and students of talent who are leaving this district, then you're not doing your jobs that we elected you for. Automatic rehiring or continuing a contract is not acceptable. You are letting down your community if you do that. It's not acceptable. I could go on, but I won't. Thank you very much.
Nantucket O'Neill, 120 Fern Avenue. I basically have spent my whole entire life here. I grew up, was born, went to high school here, went to middle school here, came back, and I've taught here for 33 years. My speech is a little bit more emotional than everybody else's because everybody took all my ammunition. So, everything basically has been said, but I am standing here in front of you tonight, and it's not because this is going to impact me. 33 years, I don't have much longer, I promise. For those of you who would like me to leave, I promise I'm leaving soon. My children, my friends, my colleagues, they ask me all the time, why don't you leave? You can retire. Walk away. I can't walk away, and I need you not to walk away. I need us to make a change. I need you to figure out something, because this doesn't work. This is not Collingswood. I'm not asking to go backwards. I know everybody says we want to get, the teachers want to go backwards. I don't want to go back. I want to move forward. But we have to have passion, and we have to have people who support us and communicate with us. The biggest issue in this school district right now, and the reason why people are leaving, is because of the lack of support and the feeling that we are appreciated. I'm a gym teacher, okay? A physical education teacher. I've never really, I'm not, I'm not going to compare myself to the, to 10-year, 10-year English teachers. My job is different. My job is to build relationships with students, and I believe I do that. If your children know me, your children know that I care for them and I love them. Okay? But every teacher in this district feels the same way. They have much bigger responsibilities in the reading aspects and the math aspects, but we need a change. Because I can promise you, this school district raised five of my children. They went on. Four of them are educators. Two of them are working in other districts that they love. I have two that are graduating in May with masters in special education, and I wouldn't let them apply here today. And I know there's jobs. But right now, I could not consciously look at any person that I taught or that I raised and said, this is a place you want to work. And it should be. That was their goal when they left high school, was to come back and be Collingswood. That's what we are. We're Collingswood. Like the O'Neill girls, that's what we do. We're Collingswood. And I need you to, as a group, you got to figure it out, because this is not working. People are leaving faster than we can replace them.
Good evening, Dr. McDowell, board members, parents, students, faculty, staff, friends. Trey. My name is Kevin Adams, a member of the glorious Collingswood High School Counseling Department. I've been a dedicated Collingswood employee for the past five years. This year marks my 19th year in the New Jersey public school system. I will not speak tonight on the number of faculty and staff vacating their positions in our district. I will not speak on the overall decline in the climate of our buildings. All of these statements have already been said or will be said by the people in line behind me. Tonight, I will talk about a random encounter I had with a stranger, an encounter that led to conversation that has had one statement burning in my brain for the better part of this past month. Roughly two weeks ago, I sat in the bleachers at the Dept Township Rec Center waiting for my boys' wrestling match numbers to be called. In order to ward off my nervousness, and yes, I'm more nervous than my own boys before they wrestle, I fell back on my greatest coping skill, small talk. I struck up conversation with a woman next to me. We both talked about our professions and family, and then she asked me about my family and which school district I worked in. I told her I was a school counselor, married to a phys ed teacher in the back of the room there, father of three children. I told her that we were both employed at Collingswood High School. This being my fifth year, my wife her 18th. And then I waited. I waited for what so many people have told me in the past. I waited to hear the same thing that people have told my wife for almost two decades. Collingswood, what a great small town and school district, and the restaurants, those restaurants are amazing. What I actually heard was something totally different than I anticipated. Oh, I heard it's not going so well there. Now, if you're sitting there in silence thinking, what do we care about the thought process of some random stranger that Kevin ran into, then I'm going to ask you to ask yourself to look in the mirror and ask why you ran for a second term or contract renewal. Because if we don't understand what a potential stranger means, then we are missing the bigger picture. Towns that are successful are built off the people wanting to come to them based off of home value, thriving business, a secure infrastructure, and most of all, an educational system that is top tier. I said last year in a meeting with staff, admin, concerned members of the community that we are in a decline. A complete stranger sitting on an uncomfortable plastic bleacher sees it, and if there is someone within five feet of me that knows it, then there are hundreds, if not thousands, of people who know the same thing. Maybe one of them planned to move here. Maybe one of them may have had a child that could have been our next valedictorian, star varsity player, lead actor, singer, performer, club advisor, or teacher's favorite student, or possibly the next Trey Ramsburg. But we may never know if we continue in the direction that we are going. Never before have we seen so many of our Collis, Oakland, and Woodlands students transfer elsewhere. How many people from outside towns are going to want to come here and raise their children and ultimately stay if our foundation, which is our school district, is broken? And while this sounds like a stretch, I've seen it firsthand. Of those 19 years I've served in public education, the first six were as a classroom teacher in a small town that was built very much like ours on pride, legacy, and small-town vibes. A town whose infrastructure was secure until the town began to falter. I can go into more detail. All you got to do is call me. Who is to say the next stranger I meet this upcoming weekend isn't a business owner looking to expand or a parent looking to move to little old Collingswood? Who is to say their child won't be the one that carries our Collis colors for the next generation? I'm 100% secure in sending my oldest son...
Thank you, Mr. Adams. Thank you. Sorry, your time's up. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Tim Srebian, and I have been a science teacher at Collingswood Middle School since 2018. When I joined the middle school, I was welcomed with open arms. At this point, my coworkers are my family. When our superintendent joined us in 2021, I was prepared to welcome him to our family. In one of his earliest emails, he stated that he wanted to further the goals of Collingswood to inspire confidence, critical thinking, creativity, and perseverance. Now in 2024, I must ask if he is furthering those goals. Is Dr. McDowell a highly effective superintendent? Does Dr. McDowell inspire perseverance? Well, perseverance is roughly defined as the continued effort to do or achieve something despite difficulties, failure, or opposition. Since Dr. McDowell has been superintendent, our school district has seen 32 retirements and 97 resignations, making combined 129 people. That's 38% of my family lost in three years. I will admit, I do not know all the circumstances of those departures, but that is a worryingly high number, so I believe the answer is no. Does Dr. McDowell inspire creativity or critical thinking? I believe Dr. McDowell should be proud that our students create incredible murals, portraits, sculptures, plays, musicals, and concerts that can rival any district in the state. However, does Dr. McDowell inspire the creativity of the students? Well, it would help if Dr. McDowell attended those concerts and art showcases, but he doesn't. How can a superintendent inspire students when he is not present to see them? In addition, after the protests of last year, Dr. McDowell had promised a comprehensive plan two, and I quote, "improve diversity, equity, and inclusion in our schools." More information was to be forthcoming, coming, but it's been almost a year, and nothing has been done except having us watch scripted and uninspired training videos. Has Dr. McDowell inspired creativity or critical thinking? No. If anything, students and teachers offer solutions, but he has actively avoided them. This leads to the final question. Does Dr. McDowell inspire confidence? One need only look at the events of last Tuesday to answer that question with a no. Last Monday evening, schools across New Jersey were evaluating the weather and decided on a two-hour delayed opening. My own children's district informed us of a delay 6:00 PM that night. However, Dr. McDowell did not send out a two-hour delay notification for Collingswood until 7:00 AM Tuesday morning. How are employees and families supposed to have confidence in a superintendent when they are not given enough time to make a plan under those circumstances? On that morning, my own 45-minute commute at 5:30 doubled to 90 minutes due to icy road conditions. Myself and several others were already at the school when the call for delayed opening went out. But then Dr. McDowell did something that ultimately made me decide to speak tonight. He stated the school couldn't be opened because the buildings and grounds didn't finish snow removal in a timely manner. Dr. McDowell had been informed of weather conditions, and he knew the local districts were delaying. A strong leader does not shift blame for his own decisions. So, overall, no. Dr. McDowell does not inspire confidence. If the goals of the superintendent of Collingswood are to inspire confidence, critical thinking, creativity, and perseverance, then my personal evaluation is Dr. McDowell will be considered...
Thank you, Mr. Srebian.
...ineffective.
Hi. Good evening. My name is Valerie Yosway. My address is 332 Cotella Avenue. I have four students in the Collingswood School District. I have two fifth graders at Tatum, and I have two juniors at the high school. When I first moved to Collingswood 14 years ago, the school district had an excellent reputation. This played a significant role in my decision to move here from Philadelphia. Overall, I have been pleased with my four children's experiences at the elementary school level. However, I am extremely dissatisfied with the high school experience my teenagers have had. They have become desensitized to fights to the extent that they don't even bring them up unless I bring it up. We all remember the fight that broke out in the cafeteria at the end of 2022. The one student that was attacked was my daughter's boyfriend, and I had to pick her up due to her having a panic attack to witnessing that. And when my son came home at the normal school time, I questioned him, and I said, what happened at the cafeteria today? And he looked at me and said, I don't know what you're talking about. He's so desensitized to seeing fights at the school that he didn't even know that I was referring to a fight that was so severe that it was all over the news. They believe that it is normal for teachers to frequently leave. Speaking with parents from neighboring districts, I can confirm that the reputation of the Collingswood Schools has been deteriorating in recent years. As many have mentioned earlier, it is now considered a chaotic and problem situation, a hot mess.
Good evening. Jack McMullin, Belmont Avenue. 34-year Collingswood resident and a parent of children who attended and graduated from our Collingswood Public Schools. There's always been a sense of community ownership and genuine, genuine community investment in our public school system, as demonstrated by the level of engagement of our residents. Over the last several years, however, I've heard from increasing numbers of neighbors and fellow residents that they're feeling disconnected from our school board, and in some cases have even expressed to me, this has led them to feel disenfranchised from our public school system. And I surmise this does not come as a surprise to the members of the board, because I know you've heard similar sentiments, and I've noted your attempts to proactively address that perception. I respect the fact that what you do in your capacity as a board member is very hard, extremely nuanced, and when it comes right down to it, a thankless job. And I appreciate the balancing act that's required of you to honor and acknowledge the voices of all of our residents. That is not an easy task. Obviously, I love our school system, I cherish our community, and I want all of our residents to share that same sentiment. But when I talk to my neighbors who express this feeling of disconnection, they often express that they feel dismissed or that their input is not valued by our policymakers and in school-related matters specifically reference a loss of credibility and a loss of faith that they feel toward the Board of Education. There are stakeholders in our community who have publicly stated that the process engaged in by the board to hire the superintendent was a process that was devoid of both community input and communication from the board. And please note, that is not the fault of the candidates who went through that process. Community members cite a lack of transparency on the part of the board in this process and feel that they were never provided with adequate information about how the final decision was made. And regardless of how you may personally feel about this perception among certain members of our community, I still believe a response is necessary. This current board, many of whom were not board members during the superintendent's search, can't go back in time to address that situation. However, with the superintendent's contract renewal on this month's agenda, this current board has the golden opportunity to take time and make the effort to explain to the community the evaluative process in which the board engaged and the subsequent decision-making process that led to the recommendation for the contract renewal. I believe this is an important step in addressing the perceived loss of credibility and loss of faith in the board, and I further believe that's an essential and necessary step to attempt to reconnect those members of our community who have expressed these feelings of... This current board, many of whom were not board members during the superintendent's search, can't go back in time to address that situation. However, with the superintendent's contract renewal on this month's agenda, this current board has the golden opportunity to take time and make the effort to explain to the community the evaluative process in which the board engaged, the subsequent decision-making process that led to the recommendation for the contract renewal. I believe this is an important step in addressing the perceived loss of credibility and loss of faith in the board, and I further believe that's an essential and necessary step to attempt to reconnect those members of our community who have expressed these feelings of being disconnected and dismissed. With a school referendum in our communities near future, it's incumbent upon this board that all residents share a sense of faith in our board and their input is valued. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Adrian Earl. I live at 409 Comley F. To be honest, it's difficult to stand up and speak tonight as an employee, both out of concern for potential repercussions for speaking, as well as just the sense that previous concerns from both staff and parents have gone unheard due to lack of response or change. But here I am. I am a graduate of Collingswood Schools, a counselor at Collingswood Middle School for thirteen years, and a parent of two Collingswood students. I care deeply about the future of our students and our schools. I would ask the board members to consider the following issues, all which have been brought up at previous board meetings and tonight, when evaluating how to move forward with the next superintendent contract. There have been ninety-seven staff resignations and thirty-two retirements since February of 2021. There have been cuts to teaching positions. There have been cuts to programming, not justified by any lack of student requests or enrollment, including all culinary arts classes, theater classes, sewing, contemporary crafts, sculpture, art of cartooning, mixed media, to name a few. And class sections were also cut from both our band and orchestra programs. There have been cuts to support classes in ELA and math at the secondary level, making it more difficult to support many struggling students within the regular education program. Along with all these cuts, there have also been questionable spending on administrative initiatives not directly impacting students, like leasing central offices, creating assistant superintendent position, creating assistant BA position, et cetera. These are issues that are currently doing harm to our students' education and will continue to impact the future of our district. These concerns cannot be explained away on an individual basis. We need our district leaders to actually hear and believe the concerns of the people who are showing up for our students every day. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. I'm not seeing anyone else stand up, so in the interest of time, we are going to move on to Section Eight, which is the superintendent's report.
So, good evening. Thank you for all who were in attendance. Section eight point zero one is the student enrollment report. December of 2022, student enrollment was two thousand two hundred and ninety-nine. Enrollment as of December 2023 is twenty-two seventy-six. And the enrollment report link will be updated. There was a coding error, so that should be updated shortly. Eight point zero three and eight point zero four are the suspension and the anti-bullying report. Just had a few announcements that we wanted to share this evening. First and foremost, we are in the midst of budget development season, and so our business office has provided all schools and departments with budget information, and today marks day one of budget presentations and requests. In general, the process for budget development is that we provide necessary guidance to schools and departments. Schools and departments are supposed to go back to their respective spaces, look at their student data, look at the needs expressed by their staff, and make recommendations to move forward. We collect all of that data, curate all of that data, and then we wait for funding information to come in. And so in February, we will receive student projected enrollment. We will also receive state aid. And then we start conversations back and forth between all school and district departments about how do we make sure that we are supporting the needs of our students and that we are being mindful of the resources that are available. So aligned this year to our district goals and priorities, we've placed emphasis on how are we utilizing time in order to achieve our goals. We're also leveraging feedback directly received from students and staff about how we should be allocating our time, and we're working closely with schools to develop student-centered learning days while honoring the feedback that is continuing to come in from parents and caregivers. So as a result, written guidance and expectations have been provided. Guidance includes tools around scheduling, considerations for their instructional days. Brainstorming of options generally takes place among school and district leaders on a monthly basis. And so some of our budget priorities include, first and foremost, maintenance of our dedicated faculty and staff, leveraging the expertise of the educators on each campus, providing opportunities to distribute leadership more effectively, and to continue to build capacity around site-based leadership. Supporting our district leadership team through the alignment of roles and responsibilities, aligned with our strategic plan, our objectives, and our school-based needs and support. In terms of our curriculum and instruction, a comprehensive curriculum review, looking at the rigor, relevance, and cultural responsiveness of the resources that we provide to teachers and how it manifests in classrooms. And ultimately, looking at how do we better define all of the college and career pathways that we currently have, and then how do we put ourselves on a better pathway for the future? And then ultimately, using student need and preference to drive much of the decisions, where are areas that we need to expand, and where are areas that we need to make adjustments? The core foundation of our new student learning schedules is twofold. First and foremost, we are shifting towards the elimination of all non-contractual early dismissal days in order to restore that amount of time. We've heard loud and clear from families, specifically families with small children, that the burden of the early dismissals it poses on them, and so we're making a pretty significant change. We're also looking to provide our teachers with common planning time during the school day so that they have sufficient time to collaborate with each other, to look at student data, to make informed decisions, and work collaboratively with each other. And so we believe that as professionals, it's important for educators to have protected time. We also are seeking to increase preschool. We fully believe that access to high-quality, early childhood education should not be a want, but it should be a right here in Collingswood. And so our goal is to continue to expand seats for all Collingswood families who want them. And so I would be remiss and in trouble by one of our district supervisors who is watching on the live feed if I did not make the announcement for preschool and kindergarten registration. Our preschool and kindergarten registration team are looking forward to the upcoming season. Collingswood families with children that are three and four as of October 1st and not currently in our program can apply for full-day, free preschool through our lottery application, which opens on February 21st. Children attending kindergarten and not currently enrolled in our preschool program can register at any time. The registration team continues to encourage families to share with their neighbors, to look out for additional information. That'll be shared in coming weeks, because we want to make sure that any family that has a desire to participate in our program has the opportunity to do so. We'd like to provide a grant update announcement, but also providing a statement as it relates with grant funds. And so in general, grant funds are created by the different constituencies, philanthropic groups, federal and state lawmakers, in order to provide timely and meaningful support for a specific period of time. And so coming back from the pandemic, there were challenges that each of our schools faced that many school districts around the country were ill-prepared to deal with, but the money was not provided in perpetuity. It was provided in order to make sure that we were providing the necessary assistance to our students and our staff at that moment in time. And so our goal is to build capacity for, on an annual basis, is to look at our programs, to make strategic decisions based on what's working, what's not working, make those critical adjustments. Keeping and maintaining the things that we believe are going well and are of great value to our students and our staff, and then making appropriate decisions about the things that are not. And so we are pleased to inform the public that Collingswood Public Schools has yet received another mental health screening in schools grant in the amount of $62,000. It gives us a grand total in the last twenty-four months of $6.3 million in additional funds that all goes to support the students and the families within Collingswood Public Schools. And so this is a renewable grant program that will provide targeted levels of funding for the next four years, renewable of $62,000. And the purpose of this is to provide supplemental funding and resources to allow districts that already are engaged in the mental health services grant, of which we are a partner district, to implement depression screening to identify students in grade seven through twelve who are really struggling and are at risk. And so when we receive these types of funds, they go directly to provide targeted levels of support to students that are in need. Using existing funds, our SHARP tutoring program is currently progressing with over thirty students receiving currently after-school targeted high-dose tutoring K through five. We've also received the New Jersey High Impact Tutoring Grant that will begin in February, where students who are challenged academically will receive additional support during the school day, because it is problematic to ask students who are already struggling to stay after school. And so we are leveraging resources when they come in to meet the expanding and the immediate needs that our students are facing. We'd also like to commend the Panther Pantry, which you heard during our secondary schools' presentation. They are currently expanding this tremendous program across all school campuses, including school district offices. Their mission is to provide individual students and families in Collingswood and Oakland with supplemental nutritional food, diapers, feminine hygiene products, additional household supplies, in a very cheerful, welcoming, confidential, nonjudgmental environment. And so we just wanted to commend the Panther Pantry team for seeing a need and filling a need. We heard a lot about the importance of curriculum, and I want to share that an RFP, so a release for proposal, has been issued for a comprehensive curriculum audit. And the purpose of this audit is for us to partner with a firm that has expertise in performing independent equity and inclusivity audits in public schools. And so we are inviting qualified providers to submit proposals to be able to support our efforts to close achievement gaps by providing underrepresented students with equitable access to programming and resources by eliminating policies, practices, attitudes, and cultural messages that reinforce individual and institutional bias and disparate outcomes. We're also looking for experienced professionals to help us reevaluate what it is that we're doing and help us build capacity to be responsive to the continuing change of the standards and the expectations coming from the state and coming from local needs. And so in terms of some of the work that we're doing aligned with our Vision 2026 strategic plan goals and objectives, our focus is to build capacity in the work of inclusiveness, cultural awareness, anti-racism, and acceptance of individuals through training, strategic planning, and implementation and support. We have partnered with A to Z Equity Coaching for their online self-paced learning management system, based on feedback that we received last year from faculty and staff about the need for additional resources in a nonjudgmental way where individuals could be self-paced based on their understanding of this really large and daunting topic around equity and inclusion. And so we have purchased access for all certified district employees to participate in Phase One, with Phase Two being for all non-certified faculty and staff, with the fundamental goal of us as a school community having consistent foundational and common language as we talk about students, as we talk about initiatives, as we make plans for the future. And so what was also referenced earlier, and I just wanted to not go back over, but the, from an academic content standpoint, we're not just checking boxes. And so it is important to note that our schools, our school district, we cover equity and inclusive topics in a variety of ways throughout the year. We have a unique opportunity during the month of February to highlight the good work, but that work doesn't only surface and manifest in February. And so we just wanted to make sure that we're acknowledging the collective work of our teachers, the collective work of our school leaders in those efforts. And that concludes my report for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. McDowell. We did Section Nine student reports earlier in the meeting, so we are moving to Section Ten, the Business Administrator Board Secretary Report. Ms. Coleman.
All righty. Everybody's been waiting for it, right? Ten point zero one is the December monthly budget transfers. Ten point zero two are your financial statements, your board secretaries' report, treasurer's report, cash flow analyses. Ten point zero three are student activity cash reports for the month of December. Ten point zero four are your November and December food service financial statements. Ten point zero five is a listing of the purchase orders that have been issued for the month of January. And a ten point zero six is the listing of the warrants to be paid pending approval tonight.
Thank you. Moving on to Section Eleven, the Buildings, Grounds, and Finance Committee. Mr. Craig will present.
Thank you. The Finance, Buildings, and Grounds Committee reviews all financial statements, purchase orders, and warrants on a monthly basis. The committee also reviews and approves all contracts with outside service providers and oversees all maintenance and capital improvement projects district-wide, seeking approval on the following items. Eleven two to eleven nine is the Board Secretary Report as it was presented. Eleven ten is a rate for, setting a rate for evaluation for, within the district, for students coming from outside of the district that require evaluation services. Eleven eleven is a request to seek proposal for a pair of professional instructional aids. Our contract is up with our current assessed provider, so seeking proposals for that service. Eleven twelve to eleven fourteen are shared service agreements with Oaklin for a nurse to support our pre-K students, child study team, and tech services. Eleven fifteen is to rejoin the Ed Services Data, Ed Data Services Co-op, which we have been in for the last several years and saved a significant amount of money. Eleven sixteen is that mental health screening grant, the four years and $62,000 that Dr. McDowell shared. Eleven seventeen, year three of the building capacity grant, which is the engineering program, high school. Eleven eighteen is Title I budget carryover funds and the allocation of those funds. Eleven nineteen and eleven twenty are use of facility requests for Collingswood Youth Theater and then for Acme Accordion School to do accordion lessons at Newby. So I am seeking approval for items eleven two to eleven twenty.
Motion to approve said items.
So moved.
And a second? Questions or comments from board members?
Sorry, Sarah, did you second that, or is it Mary? Okay, thank you. Still trying to learn your voice.
I'll just say that I'm very much looking forward to the accordion club. That sounds amazing and so excited for that. So thank you, Ms. Angelus, for bringing that there. I think that will be adorable. Any other questions or comments from board members? Roll call, please.
And thank you, Lisa, for doing all that stupid paperwork I made you do for the accordion club. Mr. Chu.
Yes.
Mr. Craig.
Yes.
Mrs. Maya.
Yes.
Mrs. McCulkey.
Yes.
Mrs. Severino.
Yes.
Mrs. Seltzer.
Yes.
Mrs. Sherman.
Yes.
Mr. Tabey.
Yes, with an extension on any items marked with an asterisk.
Mr. Dulcous.
Yes.
Mrs. Kayden.
Yes. Section Twelve, the Curriculum Committee. Mr. Chu will present.
The Curriculum Committee oversees and approves the district curriculum and assessment programs, as well as field trips, home instruction, co-curriculum programs, and the school calendar. Items twelve point oh two, twelve point oh three, and twelve point oh four are field trips. I have a history of botching these field trips, I've written them down today. There are no elementary school field trips up for approval this month. For middle school, there are two. There's one for a tech ed competition, and there's one for the pops concert for the sixth to eighth grade orchestra. In high school, there's also a pops concert trip for ninth to twelfth grade orchestra. There are two trips for the multiple disability classroom, one to the AWA animal, I guess, organization for learning about pets, and then one to an inclusion coffee shop to learn about possible job opportunities. And then there are trips for mock trial, which I think was spoken about during the presentation, and also a trip for environmental science to visit the Pines Commission. Okay, all right. Twelve point oh five is overnight field trip for Model U1. Again, all- Pineslands Commission. Okay, all right. 12.05 is overnight field trip for Model U1, again, also I think spoken about during the secondary presentation. 12.06, 12.07, 12.08, and 12.09 are add district home instruction placements. And then 12.10 is Big Wow Alpha and Omega Working Dogs. This is a free presentation offered by that group for the preschool classes at no cost. We've had a couple of these now so far. And so, I'm seeking approval for items 12.02 through 12.10.
Motion to approve said items.
So moved.
Second.
Questions or comments from board members? Roll call, please.
Mr. Chu?
Yes.
Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Mrs. Maya?
Yes.
Mrs. McCulkey?
Yes.
Mrs. Severino?
Yes.
Mrs. Seltzer?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Tabey?
Yes, with extension on any items marked with an asterisk.
Mr. Dulcous?
Yes.
Mrs. Caden?
Yes. Section 13 is the Personnel Committee. Ms. Sheridan Celia wanted me to note that she is very disappointed that she couldn't be here tonight. She knew this was an important night. She is unfortunately down for the count with COVID, and to be sure that she is on the mend and that she was not infecting anyone else, she stayed home this evening. So, to begin, the Personnel Committee reviews all recommendations for teaching and staff employment, considers co-curricular employment, and considers all professional development opportunities for staff members. All right, let's see if I can do this as well as she does. 13.02 to 13.03 are two retirements, retirements, excuse me, and we thank Ms. Betts and Mr. Topeka for their years of service. They will be with us until the end of the school year. 13.04 to 13.08 are resignations. 13.10, oh nine, excuse me, is an employee dismissal. 13.10 is approval of an extended leave for a staff member. 13.11 to 13.14 are various new hire positions, including, and I just wanted to make sure that this was made clear, because I know a lot of us were concerned about finding a replacement for a music teacher mid-year, but the person replacing them has, is a retired music teacher and has that experience. 13.15 is approving the hours that Betty Jo Prince worked in the previous summer, July 2023, on an as-needed basis to help with secondary scheduling before our secondary, or before our Director of Counseling started, excuse me. 13.16 to 13.21 are number of transfers and revised contracts. 13.22 is the adoption of, or the approval to have another elementary school permanent substitute at Sharp Elementary. 13.23 is the approval of after-school mental health support staff to be there on an as-needed basis at the center in Garfield where services are given. 13.24 is the, is a revised contract for one of our social work interns at Garfield Elementary. 13.25 and 13.26 both deal with personnel for our Building Capacity for Career Pathways Grants. The first is an elementary Lego workshop facilitator for the elementary, and the second are two facilitators for two different clubs using these funds. TSA, which is not the travel, or the Security Administration, but is what exactly?
Technology Student Association.
Technology Student Association, which makes much more sense for school, and e-games as well. 13.27 through 13.29 are the approval of some psychology interns. These are just approving school psychology interns, Saturday school detention, folks, and athletic event personnel. 13.30 is approving the revision, revision of the hourly rate for all non-seasonal minimum wage employees from $14.13 per hour to $15.13 per hour effective January 1st. That is, we are staying in continuation with the updates to the minimum wage for the state. 13.31 is the approval of a student-teacher practicum placement, a music teacher to accompany Mr. Hartong, which lucky them. 13.32 is the approval to send the contract for Dr. McDowell to the county superintendent's awful office for approval. To clarify a few points here, the first being that we had an executive session prior to this meeting to discuss this at length. We are obviously not permitted to get into any details about any personnel contracts or performance, but there is an annual evaluation that is done for, that is required by law for every superintendent. We have a tool that we use, using standards that were created through the New Jersey School Boards Association, as well as the New Jersey Superintendent's Association. It's a tool that was developed. That happens yearly, as well as regular check-ins. We do them roughly quarterly. They're not quite. We do it every couple of months. This is, that's a fairly new procedure, but we've been doing it so far this year to discuss board goals as well as progress. And we feel that we are doing our best to be giving feedback on a regular basis. During the discussion, while everyone may not be in agreement, we did, we did come to a consensus about whether or not to continue with this on the agenda. 13.33, substitutes and tutors, and 13.34 is the travel expense form that is mainly for various professional development opportunities for staff within the district. So, asking for approval for items 13.02 to 13.34 this evening. Is there a motion to approve said items?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Questions or comments from board members?
I have a question about the wellness. I've referred this down earlier, the wellness coverage position for the mental health support. Can you just give a little more detail as to what that is?
Sure. Beth Ann.
Um, we have to have somebody there. It's Garfield. So, they have to go to Garfield, and they basically let the families in, because it's like after-school hours. So, we have somebody there to kind of greet the families and let them in, because the school's technically closed.
Thank you. No, that makes perfect sense. When I, when I see Wellness Center, I'm thinking some of the initiatives at the, at the secondary level.
This is the one, this is the one house at Garfield.
Gotcha, thank you.
Any other questions or comments from board members?
Um, I do have additional. So, I also just want to say again, and looking at some of these retirements and resignations, particularly with staff members who have been here for an extremely long time, I think it is very important that we continue to have discussions on staff retention, for the importance of, you know, our student population, and to make sure that they are well-served, and to, you know, kind of really, really delve, delve more into those topics as a board. And also, just briefly concerning the sending of Dr. McDowell's contract to the county, while I feel that tonight's executive session was extremely useful, I just feel that we, as a board, have not engaged in enough conversation on this very important topic, and I look forward to having more of those conversations. And I also think it's important to consider some of the feedback that we heard about this topic tonight.
Any other questions or comments from board members?
Yeah, I do. I just want to add that I know it's difficult to get up here and speak in public for people, and, and, you know, we were elected to hear everybody's voices, and I think I speak for us all when I say that we appreciate hearing from everyone tonight.
Thank you. Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Sorry. Mr. Chu?
Yes.
Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Mrs. Maya?
Yes, with the exception of 13.32, I vote no.
Mrs. McCulkey?
Yes, except for item 13.32, where I vote no.
Mrs. Severino? Mrs. Seltzer?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Tabey?
Yes, with the extension on items marked with an asterisk.
Mr. Dulcous?
Yes, except for required to abstain.
Mrs. Caden?
Yes. Section 14, Culture, Climate, and Policy Committee. Ms. Seltzer? Good evening, everyone. First, want to thank Mary Severino for her service as the chairperson of the, of the Culture, Climate, and Policy Committee before this. Big shoes to fill. The Policy and Regulations Committee reviews all updates and changes of district policies and regulations. There are no policies up for a first read at this time. However, there are some policies up for a second read, as you can see listed here. There are quite a few. We did not have a January committee meeting for the Policy Committee. We will have a meeting in early February, and one of the, the big items for discussion in the Policy Committee is the revision of the Code of Conduct, which we know is a big undertaking, and we're, we're excited to dig in. We do have a timeline for that work over the course of the rest of this academic year, and we will update everybody a little bit more at the February board meeting. So, I am It's my first time. I am asking for approval of the 14.03, the policies for the second reading. Motion to approve said item.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Questions or comments from board members?
First of all, I'd be the same way. So, good job, Kate, and thanks, Mary. You did a great job leading that committee for all the time that I was on it as well. And I look forward to more discussions about policy, but I just want to, you know, touch base on the Code of Conduct one, because I know that's something that we're going to be talking about more and more, and I just want to reiterate that we need a lot of input from the people who are in the buildings that are doing the work, you know, before we make any decisions on that.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from board members? Roll call, please.
Mr. Chu?
Yes.
Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Mrs. Maya?
Yes.
Mrs. McCulkey?
Yes.
Mrs. Severino?
Yes.
Mrs. Seltzer?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Tabey?
Yes, with extension on any items marked with an asterisk.
Mr. Dulcous?
Yes.
Mrs. Caden?
Yes. Section 15, Miscellaneous, is the approval of the Anti-Bullying Report, or the HIB report presented during the December 2023 board meeting. It includes both potential and confirmed instances of bullying, and includes the outcome of each investigation. Do we, do we do a motion? Okay. Motion to approve item 15.01?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
I have a question here.
Yep.
I would just take this opportunity to, I guess, query and stress that I think whenever the numbers are appropriate for us to be releasing the report on what our SLO interactions are with the students, you know, understanding that there are concerns about making sure that the numbers included in there are large enough that student privacy is met. But once that's, that number and threshold is met, I would encourage us to, to, you know, report on that publicly, as we said that we would.
Any other questions or comments from board members? Roll call, please.
Mr. Chu?
Yes.
Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Mrs. Maya?
Yes.
Mrs. McCulkey?
Yes.
Mrs. McCulkey, I'm sorry.
Yes.
I'm tired. Mrs. Severino?
Yes.
Mrs. Seltzer?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Tabey?
Yes.
Mr. Dulcous?
Yes.
Mrs. Caden?
Yes. Section 16 is our second opportunity for public participation. This one includes items that are not listed on the agenda. I will very quickly go over that attempts to, to resolve all concerns and complaints should first go through appropriate staff members and administrators. We will be actively listening and taking notes, as you've seen us doing. And in all fairness, who wish to speak, there's, there's a three-minute time limit, and please come to the microphone and state your name and address for the record.
Wayne Rossi, 114 East Palmer. Yeah, I think, you know, listening to a lot of the discussion that happened today, I think the board did the right thing, because I don't think you can solve staffing churn by firing the superintendent every few years. I think Sarah had said at one of the events that it sounds like a good idea, but it's, it's just not sometimes, you know, to just, let's make a change. You know, for change's sake, it, it doesn't fix fundamental issues. I, I do hope to see that this goes on in, you know, in a positive way, and that we see again more teachers of color specifically. Also, I want to say once again that I would like to hear more from the board on how the curriculum crosswalks are being integrated through the school district, and I would, once again, like to urge the board that the school liaison officer not be armed in interactions with students. Thank you.
Thank you.
Clinton Connor, 609 Woodlawn Avenue. I just wanted to ask the board to actually kind of do something with all the retention stuff. As most people probably know, the governor about, probably about a month and a half ago waived the Praxis 1, but to my knowledge, the New Jersey Department of Education has not actually provided any districts guidance or requirements on how they can actually hire teachers in the absence of the act, the Praxis 1. The Rutgers Policy Lab did some research on, on teacher retention in the state of New Jersey, and they found that districts post-pandemic have ranged from 38% teacher loss in places like Edgewater, in Bloomsbury, in Greenwich Township, to like regular rates of like 3 and 4%. So, this is a statewide issue of teacher retention. Some of the districts were losing 50% of their newly hired educators within the first year. Further, they found that only 6.9% of college graduates in the state of New Jersey are educators, are receiving education degrees. The number of education degrees has dropped 41% since 2009. So, I urge the board and the district, as I've worked with like nine districts throughout Canton and Burlington Counties, to please urge the state to provide guidance on how we can actually hire these teachers, per Governor Murphy's legislation that he signed, allowing us to hire people, waiving the Praxis 1. So, I just would appreciate if, you know, people could urge that. And then, the other thing is, I would like to maybe just follow up about some questions that I have about the freshman sports, and if there's anything that community members can do to support bringing back any of the freshman sports that may or may not be getting cut, but I'm willing to help through fundraising, if there's, you know, enough students. I know sometimes with some of the sports, there's not even enough kids going out for the teams, but I'm more than willing to help. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mark Braceoff, 904 Park Avenue. I just want to add to Clinton's comments, because I was hearing about teacher retention, and did a little bit of reading and research on it, because I was also concerned about it when I was building a program at my university. And not only, we heard tonight, pretty low teacher morale, which would be one of the reasons, but it is true that we're seeing it across the country. But there was research that came out of Rowan University, was talking about, one of the reasons for teacher retention is teacher autonomy. They lost autonomy. And then, in the eight, and the other thing that happened tonight that was really interesting was that the students stood up and started talking about disengagement. And it was my observation when I went to the high school, that students are pretty, pretty disengaged. And I don't know if we can blame the superintendent for that. I think it's a larger system. So, so, but the thing that is curious is the way which the professional learning communities are playing out here. The way that I was reading it from earlier, talking to all, talking to the committee about it, and then what I just saw tonight, it doesn't really have teacher autonomy as the piece of it. And when professional learning communities are done well, teachers get to engage in inquiries that matter for their classrooms, and they get to learn from each other. And that is connected to the other piece that's connected to teacher retention, which is filling a sense of community, and a sense of belonging, and a sense of agency in their space. This is true for all people, but it's particularly true for teachers that have been told what to teach and the content to teach for now two decades with no child left behind. And so, what we're really seeing, we saw it tonight, is a manifestation of a lot of forces that are impacting education, and we're seeing teachers play administrators, the whole thing. It was just, tonight was really disheartening, to be honest with you. This is a really disheartening conversation, because I don't actually think the conversation we had is solving any of our problems. we had is solving any of our problems. And so just a little bit of a side note about the teacher engagement, student engagement, was there was a proposal, or a thought of a proposal about how to handle cell phones in high school, and the thought was prohibition. If that's what I heard tonight, that some slight prohibition where students are not going to be allowed to use their cell phones, guarantee you that's going to create a lot of problems, and that is not the way to go. And so reconsider the fact that what we need to do to train our young people to understand cell phones and the internet is that we got to start really young, and it has to start happening in the elementary schools. So by the time they get to the high school, if what we're going to do is prohibition, you think the teachers are upset now, just wait, it's going to get worse. And so just as, as a consideration, so tonight, I hear student disengagement, I hear teachers are angry, I hear them blaming the superintendent, I hear that there's budget difficulties, which is normal right now in this country, and so we have to find a way to talk to people, get over this, because we're blaming all the wrong things. And so, yeah. Good luck.
Hi, I'm Brian McCulsky, I live at one twenty-four East Night Avenue. I just want to say, as a board, you guys should be completely ashamed of yourselves. You, you've heard all these people speak, and teachers, and applauding and stuff, and then you took none of that into account, and you just voted yes, you just blindly voted yes, except what, two people? So I, I don't know how you can look at these teachers and be like, yeah, that's totally cool, guys, we got your back. No, you don't, you don't at all, you don't at all, and it's not a national trend. This is a dumpster fire, it's beyond a dumpster fire, it's the Titanic, man, it's going down, and you guys are just like blindly, like just voting yes to everything, everything. We only have, what, a couple people say no, and when you, when somebody says no, you kick them off the board. The old man, what was his name? Yeah, Bill, Bill's gone, you know, like he, God forbid, he said no to you too many times, you kick him off the board. That's all I got.
Bruce Smith, three eleven Lakeview. I'm sorry if I'm going to repeat things that were already said. It's disheartening that there is not full ownership across the borough, the district, the citizens, teachers, board members, administrators, principals, to see how today started with the cesspool of in the wood, of people saying it's this person's fault, and this person's fault is not worthy of the kids. No one gets to come up here and talk about how much of a dumpster fire it is, because if you're saying the district is a dumpster fire, then you're including everyone, which is not just the people sitting in these chairs, it's not just the people sitting in the audience, it's not just the teachers, it's also the students. Everybody has ownership, and it's frustrating as a citizen to think that three major parts of this district cannot get on the same page, cannot take the time to sit in a room and work together with no ideal or no hope for the future. It's very disheartening to see people constantly coming up and saying about how much things suck, and about getting rid of people who said no. As an African American, as a chair of the DEI Committee, I'm happy that some people aren't sitting at the table anymore who don't represent the needs and the wants of African Americans in this district.
Alexandra Guado Smith, three eleven Lake Drive. Again, I want to thank everybody on the board. I cannot imagine, I've never been on the other side. I can't imagine what that last two hours was like, and my hope is that you all go home and relax and decompress in whatever way that you do, and then tomorrow you get up and you get going, because you understand that our goal in this community is to move forward with inclusive schools for all of our children, not just the children who look one way, all of our children. And I want to make sure that, the last thing that I say is, the people that are here, are sitting up here, they won an election. Not everybody gets to come up and speak at nine o'clock at night on a Monday, but everybody got an opportunity to vote, and I'm here supporting the people that I voted for to put them in this situation to make their votes. So, did you listen to everybody who came up, majority of the school teachers? You know, you listened to the people who voted on the election day, and I am grateful for what you did, and I'm happy, and I really truly hope that tomorrow you get up, and you have a good day tomorrow.
Renee Kraus, seven two four Park Avenue. I just want to reiterate, I am concerned with following through with the positivity in our school. I do resent the implication that anyone who did not want Dr. McDowell to be a continuing superintendent of our school district, the implication is that somehow we are racist because we want to go forward in a different way. I find that insulting. Again, it is not personal, Dr. McDowell, it is something that we need to be evaluating, what the progress is, and whether it's been adequate for the last few years. I think you need to continue looking at that, board members, please. It does have to do with retention, not only of teachers, it is not just, the public trend is this, that we've heard the numbers, the local districts, teachers are going to the other local districts. Also, students are leaving, going to private schools in other districts. Thank you.
Okay, so seeing that does not appear anyone else coming up for a public comment, I just wanted to take a moment to thank everyone for coming out tonight to speak. As Ms. Maya mentioned, that is not easy to come up to the microphone and speak in front of a microphone. Civic engagement is a key value and point of pride in our community, and it was alive and well tonight, and I think that, you know, regardless of how everyone might be feeling at this moment, that is something to be celebrated, that Collingswood makes sure that their voices are heard, and that the varying voices are heard, and so we appreciate that, and thank everyone who took the time to come speak. And while we may not always agree on everything, we do all want the best for the students of Collingswood Public Schools. I do genuinely believe that, we may not all have the exact same beliefs about what that, like how we might get there sometimes, but I do believe we all want it, and I do believe we can all get on the same page about what that can look like, and I really hope we do. I look forward to working together with my fellow board members, with Dr. McDowell, and with the entire community to continue improving upon the culture in our high school, raising the level of academic rigor in our classrooms, and addressing our facilities' needs, as well as celebrating all of the wonderful things that happen in these schools every single day, from the very small things to the large things, some of which were presented at the secondary program tonight. And I don't want us to lose sight of that sometimes, when our board meetings tend to have some pretty negative public comment, but there are some pretty amazing things happening. We have really amazing students who are going to really amazing places after they leave here, and I'd like to end on that note, and hope that we can all find a way to work together in the best interest of our students, because that's what matters. Thank you very much. At this moment, thanks, guys. Can I have a motion, we're going to move to section seventeen, a motion to adjourn this evening?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, have a nice night.